All right. It's two o'clock. We are going to start the November 12th work session with Matt and Via.
Yeah, awesome. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, I am, as you all know, I am your Assistant Mobility Director for the town. In my role currently, I'm representing the Summit Stage Board in our work towards rolling out a microtransit operation throughout the county. And I think that this program that we're looking at piloting here coming of a couple of months is a really good program to get our residents, our workforce, out of cars, out of their single-use cars, and kind of meeting our goals of really more boots, bikes, less cars. And it really should open up the idea of tying Breckenridge Free Ride to more people that can't actually access it due to being outside of that quarter mile or eighth of a mile walking distance to one of our bus stops. So I'm excited to introduce Ann and Sebastian. I'll let them do their own introduction and then we'll jump right into the presentation that we have for you today.
I'm Anne Findley. I'm the Planner at Summit Stage, and I've been involved with the microtransit program from day one.
Welcome, Anne.
Great. Thanks, Anne. Thanks, Matt. Good afternoon, Town Council and Mayor. My name is Sebastian Loria. I am the Colorado Partnerships Lead for Via Transportation. I live right down in Denver, so it's always a pleasure to come up and join you and speak with the community. And thank you very much for taking the time to allow us to present a little about the service. We're just going to spend a few minutes here today talking about how we got to this point in the microtransit pilot. Share a little bit about who Via Transportation is as a company and what we do, and then dive into a little bit more detail about what microtransit is. What will actually look like for your residents and workforce here in Breckenridge? And then share a little bit about how we communicate these types of services. So a little bit of history about how we got to this point. Summit Stage, your teams here have been working very hard, and this is all their work entirely. I just want to highlight a few of the things that they've done. So over two years ago, Ann, Matt and the team, and I believe some members of the community here, visited High Valley Transit in Summit County, Utah, which was one of the first mountain communities that deployed microtransit to support their overall transit system. After that, the team conducted a transit study with Fares and Peers based down in Denver to take a comprehensive look at microtransit and how it might support the various communities around Summit County. And then after that process, it laid out a great foundation to release a competitive procurement process. And Via responded and was lucky enough to be selected the partner for Summit Stage to help deploy this microtransit pilot and help prove out, you know, the concept of microtransit here in Summit County. So with that, just want to share a little bit more as well about Via Transportation, who we are, what we do. So we're the world's leading provider of advanced public mobility solutions. What we do is we design and build software, technology and services to help communities like Summit County improve their public transportation systems, design their systems, and just connect everybody in a community to wider public transportation. So since we launched in 2012, we have grown to over 800 partnerships across the globe in over 40 countries. More than half of those partnerships that you see here across the globe are actually microtransit partnerships. So we run quite a few services across the globe. And of those, of those 400 plus, 100 are what we actually call turnkey microtransit services. So Via is your end-to-end operator. We do everything from procuring vehicles, wrapping the vehicles, maintaining the vehicles, to recruiting drivers, training drivers, teaching them how to support microtransit in the community, and then managing day-to-day operations and overseeing the entire, the entire service delivery. We do this with our technology, which is best-in-class, and then having really high operational standards and really innovative approaches to delivering microtransit. And because of that, we've been lucky enough to partner with some of the most innovative transit agencies in cities in the world like Miami, Arlington, Paris, London. But what I'm really excited about is our experience here in Colorado and in Utah, what we call the Mountain West. So while we have global, a global presence, with me here dedicated and our various other teams, we take a lot of pride in delivering service to mountain communities across these states. So a few of them you might recognize, we partner with UTA over in Salt Lake City to deliver a really massive microtransit service on their behalf, connecting their residents to their wider transit system. Here in Colorado, we of course work with Loon Tree in Durango. And then we also power High Valley Transit. We operate everything there end-to-end, from the big fixed route buses to microtransit to any paratransit services they have. So we really have a lot of experience in mountain communities and appreciate, you know, the intricacies of delivering service to resort towns or resort communities, right? The environment is a challenge. The seasonality is a challenge, finding drivers. So having that understanding and that experience, we're really excited to bring that, that experience here to Summit County to help, you know, pilot and prove out microtransit as a successful part of your transit system here. Great. So a little bit about Via. Now I just want to turn to the basics of microtransit before digging into some of the details about how it actually will work for residents and the workforce. So at its very core, and I know this is a, this, this council is advanced in microtransit. So we'll get in a little bit more detail here, but at its core, what riders will do, residents will do, is use their smartphone or place a call to hail a shared accessible ride that will connect them to buses across their county and then the wider community. For the, and the wider community. One thing that's really important to keep in mind, that's an important aspect of microtransit, is that not every vehicle, but a certain portion of vehicles are wheelchair accessible. So it's a very accessible service as well. And so what this does when microtransit is deployed effectively in a community, it really does two things. One, it makes your public transit system much more accessible overall, right? The reach is wider, more folks can get onto it. And then it makes it much more efficient by bringing more riders into the system. We do this, microtransit does this, and you can see this on the right-hand side of the screen with all these blue dots, is turning basically everywhere in your community into a virtual bus stop. What that means is that riders, residents can be picked up or dropped off at any of these virtual bus stops in the community. And so by expanding that access, not only are you facilitating quicker transfers into the system, you're getting more folks onto the system overall, which makes your entire system more efficient, more cost-effective in the long run. So not only are you eliminating single occupancy vehicles, single occupancy vehicle trips, right? Folks that had to rely on private vehicles previously now have access everywhere across the community to public transit. You're getting more folks onto the system overall. Let's see. All right. So that's kind of the idea behind microtransit, but how is it actually going to work? Well, starting with the Rider app, our Rider app makes it really, really easy to access the entire system overall. Often what we see in communities is it requires a PhD in public transit to understand the connection times and when do I need to be at this stop and, you know, what happens if I miss that bus? We want to eliminate all of that thinking. The Rider app is basically a journey, a journey planner for you, right? So you say, I want to start today and I'm going to B. What are all my options to get there? And so what this looks like is it starts with seeing your community on the Rider app immediately when you pull it up. You request a ride with one click. From there, the system calculates and offers you microtransit, fixed route, and sometimes combinations of the two, which I'll get into here in a second. Once you have those options, you're able to go ahead and book that ride and then track it in real time and see your van moving towards you and hop on, take it to your destination and hop off. So really, really simple. But since I know this council is familiar with that and understands that, I want to dig a little bit deeper and pull back the curtain a bit to explain what's actually going on behind the scenes, right? So the riders just have to select their destinations, but what is the system actually doing? So our technology, right? The goal is to connect folks as much as possible, when possible, into the existing Breck Free Ride system, right? Put folks onto Breck Free Ride, let them ride that to their final destination. And so what that might look like here, as you can see from, from this diagram, let's say a rider is going from location one to location three. So on the Rider app, I'm going to go ahead and start with a microtransit pickup, right? Leg one, microtransit will take me to that transfer point. From there, you're going to switch from microtransit to a local bus and then take the local bus to that destination and finally arrive at your destination. Previously, those were hard connections to make, but the system is going to go ahead and help you do that really easily. And digging even a little bit further, what our algorithm is doing on the backend is looking at all the potential trips, right? Hundreds of variations that you, that could get you from A to B. We're then eliminating not possible options or tight transfers and then giving you the best route recommendations. So you'll typically have anywhere from one to three options, destination A to B. So eliminate guessing, eliminate thinking, and just let the system tell you how you need to move, how you can move throughout the community. So to make this a little bit more tangible, I wanted to pull up a couple of examples of what this might actually look like for a resident heading downtown. So we've talked a little bit about the right-hand side. During Breck Free Ride service hours, microtransit, if you're not near a fixed route stop or line, we're going to take microtransit into the closest Breck Free Ride stop and then have you complete your journey to your destination on that. But the beauty of microtransit is that it's, it's really flexible and it serves a lot of different purposes. Let's say Breck Free Ride isn't running late night for late-night employees or early morning employees before Breck Free Ride kicks into service. That's what you would see here on the left-hand side. And microtransit will then be able to fill in that gap and take you end-to-end to your destination. So what it does is it offers your residents flexibility at any time of the day to avoid taking a single occupancy vehicle while finding a really easy way to get to the destination that you need to. And when we see communities deploy this system, when it's well-designed and efficiently operated, we see it solve a lot of the challenges that Summit Stage, Summit County and Breckenridge are hoping to solve with microtransit, right? How do we efficiently and effectively get our residents to and from their jobs during, during our core hours or before, after our core hours? In King County Metro, where we've been operating with the county over there in the city of Seattle, 95% of our trips connect to or from transit, and employees take this to or from work every single day. So we see it helping solve some workforce mobility issues. In Jersey City, which was one of our earliest microtransit services, we have seen in one quarter alone almost 60,000 single occupancy tri, single occupancy vehicle miles eliminated by grouping folks onto microtransit rides and connecting them to or from transit as well. And then overall, our studies and researchers, researchers have shown that there's a significant economic impact when you deploy public transportation to your community effectively. So we are confident that, you know, a pilot here testing out this model could help solve some of the core challenges that the community is looking at here. And then finally, to wrap it up briefly, it's about, we often get asked, how do you communicate this to, to residents, to visitors, to employees? It's a different form of my, uh, public transportation. It's new. It's innovative. Folks might not be very familiar with it. Well, we work really closely with our partners, so with Matt and Ann here, the rest of the Summit County and Breckenridge teams, to make sure that we're communicating this really effectively to residents, visitors, businesses, that there's a new form of public transportation available. And we actually have three dedicated teams that will handle various aspects in support of the county in communicating this message out. And so with a well-designed system, a strong communication game and great technology behind it, we're really excited to see how this pilot can potentially help the community prove out the process, prove out the product and solve some of the issues that the county is facing. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions as well.
Questions? You want to kick off?
And one small one, just out of curiosity. When you, when you look at the microtransit app that works, where Matt got us integrated with the transit app, do those kind of work together so that a user or rider doesn't have to kind of switch back and forth?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we, we integrate directly with Transit App. That's a great mass app, right? It's, it's an app that shows all the mobility options in your community, and it's a great place for riders to go. We have a relationship with Transit App and we do integrate directly into that app. Yep.
Anything else?
On your outreach strategy, are you planning to reach our Spanish-speaking communities or do you have a plan to reach that portion of our workforce?
Yes, absolutely. So typically what we do is we try to understand all the, the local community and especially the various languages that are, that are prominent in that community. And then we make sure that all of our outreach materials are available in those languages. So typically you see English and Spanish. We've done Creole. So we'll work with the team here to understand what are the, what are the main languages we need to communicate in and make sure that we have materials to, to speak to those groups. And then in addition to that, the app is available in 20 different languages and it just reads the smartphone default settings on your, on your, on your phone and then translates directly into that. And our call centers are all able to handle 20-plus languages as well.
Yeah, that's great. And I know Floyd's done an excellent job with reaching outreach. I'm sure some of our staff can give you some great tips there.
Absolutely. And we're always looking for, for local partners to, to help support with outreach. And we are, we are absolutely open to partnering with any senior centers or local, you know, employment organizations. We love to do that type of outreach and find it really effective and are really excited by it.
Yeah, great. And then one question on, how does the app prioritize requests? Or is it really first come, first served or that based on proximity of rides? So how does that work?
So how it works overall is because you have a really extensive town-to-town fixed route system and then a great Breck Free Ride system here, is the system is first prioritizing fixed route over microtransit. So if you're able to complete a ride on fixed route, let's say you're sitting right next to a Breck Free Ride trolley stop and one's coming in three minutes and you need to go nine blocks down Main Street and you can hop off at a stop right there, we're going to put you on that ride first and foremost. We're not going to show you microtransit. Now, if there's not a good fixed route option, we will then take a look at microtransit. And the first priority will be to take microtransit to a Breck Free Ride stop. That's not an option, or if it's going to take you really, really long time, we'll take a look at microtransit to your final destination. And then we have the ability to prioritize certain groups, right? Let's say employees in, in a specific area. We have ways that we can prioritize those groups of riders to make sure that service is getting to them and that we're, we're hitting the main goals of, of the community.
That's great. Thank you.
So what is the take rate with this? Like, do you expect people to really adjust and jump right in and start using the app and the microtransit right away? Or does it take years for people to start using it?
Yeah. So, so typically what we see, typically what we do is we ramp up in the first three months to anywhere from 60 to 80% capacity in month one, 90 to 100 of peaks, peak supply. We then assume every service is very different, depends on how well you do communication, change management, anywhere from three, six months to 12 months. 12 months, you start to see what we call mature microtransit zones. And then that's giving you a better indication of kind of what your true ridership looks like. So we typically like to think about a pilot period of anywhere from six to 12 months to really get a sense of it. But it should not take, if done properly, it should not take multiple years to get to the ridership that you can expect.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
What do you anticipate your capacity, capacity to be here?
In Summit County?
Yeah, in Summit County.
In what sense, capacity?
For the, for the rollout.
Are you saying like how many cars and?
Yeah, I mean, how, you know, when you said, you know, provided you have capacity, where, what, what can we expect for where that point is?
Sure. So I can, I can speak a little bit to some of the details of the study, the Fares and Peers study. Took a look at, I believe it was four or five microtransit zones around the community, and their findings were, I believe, anywhere from 15 to 16 vehicles at peak to serve those areas, those, those microtransit zones. Now, that's not to say you're going to have 15 vehicles running at all times. You should not have that. That's the beauty of microtransit, right? During those really early morning hours, you could have, say, and I'm just making up numbers. So you could say, you know, eight vehicles because demand is lower. But when your peak commute hours, you can get up to 15 afternoon as well. Or if there's, you know, rushes on or off the mountains, you can then scale up to your peak supply. Whereas those low-demand times, you scale down. So you're saving those van hours and you're more efficiently deploying them. If that answers your question?
Yeah, generally.
I think, yeah, I think additionally, you know, that as everything is still being scoped out, the design as it sits in Breck is probably four to six vans maximum right now to get that whole service operating. And like you said, it kind of ebbs and flows throughout the day or throughout a weekend, whatever it might be. So four and six is probably the number of vehicles we would have in our town.
I'm just trying to get my head around the dollars and the numbers served and, you know.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one thing that we really pride ourselves in mobility or in the free ride is that we do provide a very efficient service with the Breck Free Ride. It's, you know, under $7 per ride, which is very efficient. You can't really look at microtransit as comparable. The cost is substantially more, if you were to say, per rider. But the value that you get by opening up transit that wouldn't be otherwise utilized by particular groups due to location away from a fixed route service or whatever it might be, socioeconomic status could be one of them. Microtransit helps to bring those people into the system, which will help, you know, we're a million riders in the Breck Free Ride this year. I would expect substantially more next year.
So will, is there any way that it can also contemplate like our e-ride hubs and kind of what the options are in the summer?
Yep. It should be able to tie directly into that. I believe through the, I don't know if their app specifically will do it, but I know that the Transit App will be able to help narrate whether they should be on the Breck e-ride, Breck Free Ride or microtransit.
Interesting. All right. Final questions, comments?
Yeah, super supportive. Try some stuff, mess it up, learn. Yeah, I like it.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Accessibility Consulting Partners, Americans with Disabilities Act, Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan Presentation. Good. Easy title.
You don't have to say 10 more.
Danny?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Dani York. I am the Liability and Administrative Coordinator for Municipal Services. That's how most of you know me, but I am also the Town's ADA Coordinator. I'm here to introduce you to Glenn Staten from Accessibility Consulting Partners. Kelly was the lead on our project, but unfortunately, he had a medical emergency yesterday and is unable to be here with us today. So Glenn will be presenting on his behalf. In the summer of 2023, the town partnered with ACP to conduct a self-evaluation and to assist us in creating a transition plan in order to meet our obligations under the ADA. ACP has been a great partner, and I can't thank them enough for their expertise, innovation and support. I also want to thank all the employees that you see here behind me. Everyone took part in creating, in creating this transition plan. I'm very proud of all the work that we have done to create this plan, and I'm excited to get started on the important work of implementing this plan. So I'll turn it over to Glenn to discuss the findings of the self-evaluation, explain the transition plan development process and answer your questions.
Thanks, Dan.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Glenn Staten. I'm a principal, also expert ADA Technical Advisor with Accessibility Consulting Partners. Like Danny said, unfortunately, Nick Kelly was supposed to be here. And Nick is really great at presenting. So he's sorely missed today because I feel that I'm not quite up to his standards. But I'm here and I'm going to do my best to get through this and give you as much information as I can, so. So our agenda today, introducing our company, ACP, talking about what the Americans with Disabilities Act is, what a self-evaluation transition plan is, talking about all the different areas that we assessed, including facilities, parks, public right-of-way website, and then summary and then recommendations for the future and questions and comments at the end. So we are Accessibility Consulting Partners, ACP for short. Our firm has about 40 years of combined experience between all of our employees. We do this work for communities, towns, cities, Title III entities such as public or private restaurants, hotels, whatever. And some of our services include ADA inspections, construction inspections, architectural plan reviews and so on. So about the ADA, ADA is a civil rights law. It prohibits discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life, including jobs, schools, transportation and all public and private places that are open to the general public. The purpose of the law is to make sure that people with disabilities have the same rights as everyone else. It's not about special rights. It's about equal rights. So what is a self-evaluation and transition plan? It is meant to identify areas of non-compliance, identify barriers to people with disabilities, figure out where structural changes are needed, where policy changes are needed, provide public notice. That includes explanation of the application of the ADA to the state and local government's programs, activities and services, contact information for the employee who is designated to address ADA compliance issues and information on your grievance procedure. So self-evaluation and transition plan, Title II requirements. So Title II is state and local governments. The ADA is comprised of five titles. Title I is employment. Title II, state and local governments. Title III is public accommodations. So Part 35 regulations, that's regulations from the Americans with Disabilities Act. It states public entities are required to provide an opportunity to interested persons, including individuals with disabilities and organizations representing individuals with disabilities to participate in the development of the transition plan by submitting comments. A copy of the transition plan must be made available for public comment. And the DOJ Civil Rights Division also states that publicly, public entities were, are also required to provide an opportunity for interested individuals to participate in a self-evaluation and transition plan process by submitting comments. So what we did was we had some public engagement opportunities where we went out into the field and, and, and asked the public to come give comments on our process. We also put a survey up on the Town of Breckenridge's website about the process. And also tonight, oh, there's more public comment tonight after this. Those comments will be incorporated into the finalized transition plan. So a transition plan at a minimum must identify physical obstacles or barriers. It must describe methodology to make facilities accessible, provide a schedule, specify the schedule for taking the steps necessary to achieve compliance with this section. And if the time period of the transition plan is longer than one year, identify steps that will be taken during each year of the transition plan. In addition, it also should indicate the official responsible for implementation of the plan. In addition, it also should indicate the official responsible for implementation of the plan. So the way we present our data is in a Excel data table called the Transition Plan Data Table, the TPD for short. And it provides barrier locations and findings, specific locations for each finding, recommendations for removal of those barriers that were identified. Is based on usage type, so high public areas that are used by a lot of the public would have a higher priority than somewhere that's not accessed as much. And then we also incorporate the DOJ's priorities, intrinsic priorities, which include, the first priority is entry, so parking and the accessible route to the entry. The second priority is services. Third priority being restrooms, and fourth priority is other, which includes things like drinking fountains and public phones. And also, we incorporate in mitigation difficulties, which we'll talk about a little later as well. And then identification of responsible department, schedule, and status. So these were the assessment totals. We looked at fifty-two total facilities. There were four thousand six hundred twenty-six total attributes collected in facilities, and two thousand six hundred and thirty-nine non-compliant findings were identified. And in parks, we assessed nine parks with four hundred and eight total attributes and two hundred and fifty-three non-compliant findings. Okay, so the self-evaluation process includes facility data collection. So we actually went to facilities, parks, did measurements of anything that is required to comply with the standards. And then took that data and completed an analysis of what did and did not comply with the ADA standards. And then developed a draft transition plan, which was submitted to the town. We asked for feedback on the draft transition plan and incorporated that feedback into our finalized transition plan. So assessing barriers. So barriers that prevent access to services, programs, and activities when viewed in their entirety. So new construction and alteration barriers that were created by new construction and/or alterations must be identified in the transition plan. Existing barriers that exist and have existed since prior to the ADA that currently present no barrier to program access must also be listed in the transition plan, even when there is no current requirement for their removal. But this also helps in future planning. If you're going to remodel a space that was built before the ADA, you know what's already wrong. So we've identified that for you. So this is our mitigation difficulty, and it's just low, moderate, and high. Low would be simple fixes handled by maintenance staff. Moderate may require some town staff and some planning and budgeting. Higher significant remediation efforts involving substantial planning and costs. This could be moving walls in a facility, replacing concrete, things like that. So these are some typical findings, and these are low mitigation difficulty barriers. So the first one there is a coat hook that's placed too high. It would be low to either a low mitigation difficulty to either lower that coat hook or provide another coat hook that is lower. Not necessarily every single coat hook needs to be at the right height, but no coat hooks were identified at the right height in this area. Signs are required to have braille and raised letters, which is a common finding as well. Fairly easy to fix. You just need new signs and to place them in the right, right location. And this is, some of the stuff is subjective. You may or may not agree with our mitigation difficulties, but we believe that lowering a grab bar or raising a grab bar, whatever the case may be, to also be low mitigation difficulty. In the transition plan database, it's all a-able to be changed at any point. If you don't agree with anything that we've put in there, you have every right and every ability to change that and change whatever you want in there. That's your plan, so. These are typical moderate mitigation difficulty barriers. This is a operable part that's too high, looks like a, a car parking kiosk or something. And the numbers there are above forty-eight inches, actually up to, it looks like about fifty-six inches. So significantly too high. Measurement of a lavatory is too high. So typically, we see sinks, the sink itself to the top of the rim must be thirty-four inches maximum. And this, and a lot of times contractors will put the shelf itself at thirty-four inches and the sink is above, so technically it's not compliant. And then last there, gaps and surfaces that are greater than half an inch maximum that need to be filled. And then these are some high mitigation difficulty barriers. Compartment is too small, which would require completely remodeling that room. You need at least sixty inches for a wheelchair to turn around. Secondly, that's a cross slope measurement that's too high. Two point zero eight percent is the maximum slope allowed, and that's at two point eight percent. And then lastly, there, measurement of a slope of a ramp that was too steep, measured at eleven point four percent or eight point three three is the maximum slope allowed. So key findings and cost estimates of the two thousand eight hundred ninety-two non-compliant elements identified that were non-compliant. Then there were ten elements identified as not best practice. Typically, that would be when access from the accessible parking to the inaccessible entry requires traversing behind cars. It's recommended that not happen, but it's not strictly prohibited in the standards. So our total estimated cost for barrier removal, and these are cost estimates, it's not going to be exactly this, but we had just over two million dollars. And here are the facilities with high costs. Town Hall here was one of the largest ones, two hundred and twenty-one barriers identified, about a hundred and eighty-five thousand estimated to remediate all those barriers, as well as the ice arena at about a hundred and forty-five thousand. Riverwalk Center Theater at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and Recreation Center at one sixteen. Here are some moderate-cost facilities. Backstage Theater, Gamin Cabin, Breckenridge Professional Offices, the Welcome Center, the Golf Club, Clubhouse, Public Works, Learning Center, and Carter Park. So in addition, we looked at your policies. The DOJ does require a total of sixteen policies for public entities. And the town currently has eight of the required sixteen policies in place. We did find some issues in most of the policies that we looked at, but that's, will be remediated with our plan, so.
Could you give us a couple examples of the policies that aren't in compliance?
That aren't in compliance? I don't have that information in front of me. There's policies.
Ones that aren't in compliance, like the eight that we currently have that are not in compliance mostly has to do with their PDFs and that don't match, like accessibility for a PDF, like which, yes, they're PDFs. Like the actual document. So there isn't necessarily anything wrong with the policy itself. It more has to do with, it's not readable.
Yeah, especially if somebody's using a screen reader, has low vision or are blind. They won't be able to follow what it actually says because of the way it's been uploaded on the internet, so. And then next was the website assessment. Website is my weak point. I don't know a whole lot about this stuff, but I will. So let's see. We got navigability, accessibility, and ease of use. The team evaluated the navigability, accessibility, and ease of use of the content of the town's website at www.townofbreckenridge.com. Testers with a variety of abilities assessed several websites that required user interaction, for example, filling out forms or requesting to be put on an email contact list, completing a variety of functional tasks, and to find and report the ADA Coordinator's name, address, email, and phone number. And these testers, we had three total testers. One was blind, one is deaf, and one has cerebral palsy. And more website assessment, functional testing. Functional testing assesses whether a website's technical features work as intended, assuring that pages load correctly. Links function, forms are submitted smoothly, smoothly, and documents display as expected. Our baseline check, it serves as a baseline check for technical performance, focusing, focusing on whether the website operates without errors, but does not evaluate user experience. Next is the public right-of-way evaluation. The DOJ has formally recognized the public right-of-way guidelines as regulatory standards for pedestrian facilities and the public right of way. They have not yet adopted them as standards, federal standards, but they have recognized them. So that's what we use in our in our assessments. As one day they will be adopted, and if you're building to ADA standards, it's going to be way below where it should be when, when the law changes, so. And then Title II Regulations. Title II Regulations mandate that local governments responsible for streets, roads, or walkways must incorporate a schedule in their transition plan to install curb ramps or other sloped areas at pedestrian crossings. Priority is given to walkways serving public facilities and places of public accommodation. So next was knowledge assessment. The purpose is to understand how employees interact with individuals, and also to gather information on what, how your employees, how much your employees know about the ADA, and then to figure out what kind of training would be good for your employees to help in that process. As well, we also did management interviews and the employee surveys. So the management interviews were done virtually. We had a total of twelve interviews, and the results are just what training we would recommend. Same for the staff survey. There was a total of a hundred and twenty-seven responses for the staff survey. So these are the recommended trainings that we came up with based on the knowledge assessment. Effective Communication in the ADA Document Accessibility, Disability Awareness and Etiquette, Accessible Social Media, accessible, accessible recreation facilities, WCAG, the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, Service Animals in the ADA. And we are working with the Rocky Mountain ADA Center to get some of these scheduled for the town in the future. Summary of findings. ACP surveyed fifty-two facilities, nine parks, and sixty-eight miles of sidewalk, including four hundred and one curb ramps, identifying such structural barriers based on ADA standards, public right-of-way accessibility guidelines, and the outdoor developed areas guidelines to inform the town's accessibility efforts.
Question?
Sure.
On this slide, so we surveyed sixty-eight miles of sidewalk.
Yes, ma'am.
And then
That's in the public right-of-way, yep.
Yeah, and a significant amount of those need some mitigation. So that's when I saw the two million dollar price tag. That seems so low, like is that really what we're, it doesn't include the right-of-way, that's why.
Oh, just the facilities and parks. That makes sense. Thank you. Yeah.
I would not be surprised if our cost estimates are also a little low, just so you know. But it's, it's based on an old book that we have. That's the only book that we have, and the only book that's been put out with cost estimates. It's called the RS Means Book. I think it was published in two thousand and four. We inflate the price, but it's still not guaranteed, and it depends on where you're located as to how accurate it's going to be, so. Best practices in compliance, the town will adopt public right-of-way and ODA outdoor developed areas as best practices, applying them to areas not covered by the ADA standards. The ultimate goal is to ensure that the town's programs, when viewed in their entirety, are accessible to individuals with disabilities. And then the transition plan goals, the transition plan will address physical barriers over a ten-to-twenty-year period, depending on the area, buildings, parks, public right-of-way, and will be regularly updated as a living document to reflect ongoing progress and budgetary adjustments. So this, this this plan is your plan. You are not stuck to any certain schedule. We've provided a schedule because it's required, but that schedule is going to change, and just know that will change, and we, everybody expects it to change. Program access commitment in the Town of Breckenridge will ensure all services, programs, and activities are accessible to individuals with disabilities. Barriers that do not currently limit, limit program access, which there were a total of four hundred and eighteen findings that do not currently limit program access, will be deferred until triggered by future events, while high priority barriers will be addressed immediately through alternative methods where feasible. So the ADA doesn't necessarily require you to remove every single barrier, unless it's a barrier to program access. Sometimes you can move programs to a more accessible location, and that's an acceptable fix for that, for that barrier. Structural barrier removal, any architectural barriers caused by alterations or new construction since January nineteen ninety-two must be eliminated. Facilities built or leased after this date must comply with accessibility standards, and programs in non-compliant locations will be relocated or brought into compliance. Long-term planning and prevention. The transition plan will enable phased barrier removal over multiple fiscal years with future policies and training to prevent new accessibility deficiencies in town facilities and developments, ensuring compliance with ADA standards moving forward. And that is my presentation. If you guys have any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thanks, Glenn. Do you have questions? No?
I do see artificial intelligence working with, to solve some of these challenges and some of the barriers, especially when it comes to website and programs and things like that.
That's a great question, and I really wish Nick was here because he, he's all about AI. As far as website accessibility, I think AI is going to be very useful for making sure that websites are actually accessible. From there, I, I don't have any other comments other than that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the presentation.
Yeah.
No, this is, I mean, incredibly helpful, and it's things we know the town needs to do. A grab bar, a couple inches, fire is completely worthless for people that need it. We do have a lot to do, and I know this just captures some of it, so at a later date, it'd be helpful to see what are we looking at the next ten-plus years, but thank you, Danny, for leading these efforts.
I would like to say, we do this work all over the country. I would like to say, um, we do this work all over the country, literally all over the country. And the town is no different than any other town or city or county or out there.
I do not like to hear that.
I don't like to hear that either. That, that is, is the case. It's not like you're any worse than any other town or, or anything, so.
I appreciate you saying that. I feels overwhelming. It's super important to work in my eyes and, you know, from my standpoint and, uh. I trust that, um, going forward, we'll, we'll find a way to, to neck away at it.
Certainly.
And, uh, get this stuff done.
I have a question for you about other towns that you've worked with. Um, of course, we want to do what's right and the best way to move forward, um, and make this accessible, but at the same time, we have. Pretty high sustainability goals and I was wondering if, you know, like you had shown the restroom signs and said. Well, we need to replace all those because they don't have Braille. Are people like putting Braille stickers on signs and same with that, you know, we have the keypad. Um, for the kiosk at the parking, is there a way? Or is it not, I guess it would be a, exactly like it's, it's probably on a case by case basis. But, you know, how much can we rely on people using their phones to scan something? I, is like. Is that part of this? Is that we can analyze those potential ways to not do the wholesale replacement? But just make it more accessible?
Yes, one hundred percent. Um, I've seen people just print out Braille and stick it to, to, to a sign. Nothing says you can't do that as long as it's the right size Braille. Um, and says what it's supposed to say, which I don't read Braille, so I couldn't tell you, but, um, most people couldn't, but, um. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, there, these are the minimum requirements. Um, the ADA does allow for alternate means of, of, um, coming into compliance. And as long as whatever you do actually provides, um, accessibility to everyone.
Right.
Um, then that is fine.
Okay.
Totally fine.
That's great. Good to know.
Yeah, I think probably the biggest, you know, part of this is documenting our decisions.
Right.
So that we can, you know, go back to that in future years, um, or at least have that. If we are ever questioned about why we did something a certain way.
That sounds great. And then our, so is the, the crew behind you, is that one person from each? Do you want to explain sort of how, um, this gets into each area of our workforce?
Yeah, so my role as the ADA coordinator is to get all the information and the resources to. All of these folks to be able to make the decisions, um, that affect, you know, each of their areas of expertise. So, um, yeah, there's pretty much somebody from every department, um, back here. Um, just because this does touch pretty much every part of the town.
Right. And then is the plan that like some of the easy things, they would figure out how much that costs and then we would do an appropriation? And then some of the harder things would obviously be more built into our annual budget?
Yes, I think that, um, the engineering department has. Um, incorporated a lot of this into the CIP already.
Okay.
Um, and as far as how e- each department is handling, um, the costs. Um, I would have to leave that up to them.
Okay.
Um. To speak about.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
So Kelly, I would say, um, some of the low hanging fruit can probably be covered in existing budgets. Um, and we do think that some of those easier fixes are very impactful fixes. Like lowering a hook or a bar and things like that. And then we will, I think we heard Carol loud and clear. We need to come back and show you what that bigger plan looks like and then explain where in the budget, um, those expenses are going to be accounted for. And how we're going to use the CIP to get at some of the bigger issues.
Sounds good. All right. Anything else? Thank you Glenn and Danny for all your work on this. Thank you guys, the department heads and. Uh, look forward to seeing this rolled out because we want to do better than other communities at accessibility.
Thank you for letting me come and present.
Our pleasure. Thanks for coming. All right. Planning commission decisions. Yeah, we have a long list ahead of us. Lots of smart people to do it though. Um, BGV's in there.
Is Sarah?
Historic shed. We're a little ahead. Yep, she is. She's coming.
Good afternoon. What can I answer for you?
I was curious if, uh, you had any, um, correspondence or any connection with, uh, anyone from Wood's Drive? Of a duplex conversation?
Um, they have been active, uh, participants and they were online during the hearing. Um, it's a reminder to me to reach out to one of them. Um, but I did, I know that the applicant has also talked with them and coordinated, um. Uh, about the upcoming construction schedule, so, um, we'll certainly continue to be in touch with them. Um, and the HOA, I believe was the president, reached out to me and I, uh, need to respond to him about timelines. Which we are tenuous at this point. We don't know when they'll apply for their building permit, but that is the next step.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
I, I don't know how we go about this, but I'd like to see with the rebuild of the shed, the, um.
Oh, that was not my project, but, um. I don't want to speak on something I don't know.
You get to make the decision. You're up here.
I'd like to see some stronger language in, in there, um.
Uh, what, I hate to say this, but, um, unfortunately it's an active application still. So you really can't be discussing it in this forum right now.
Okay. That's why I started out by saying, I don't know how to say this, but we'll have to call it, call it up at, at, when it comes across or would. How do we get our?
You'll have that opportunity, yeah, at that point if you decide to and obviously ask us questions if you need to. Before, um, in, in this setting and then if you need to, to call it up.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're, we have at least another preliminary hearing and then a final hearing.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, uh, cross, cross that line. I just, you know, I, yeah, we'll, we'll wait till the final hearing and. See the staff report and, and, uh, call it up. We have to.
Thank you.
Thanks Mark.
Appreciate it.
Thanks sir. Let us know if you have questions.
Can we? Can we change some of the mays, the musts? In some of this stuff? Is that a question?
I was thinking more questions about like why they're making the decision, like the, um.
I think the general decisions are good. Nah, but I'll wait, I'll wait till the final.
All right. Thank you guys. All right. Yeah, really.
I just, I just want to see if Gilly was on it though.
She was like, hmm. Um, we're a little ahead of schedule, but is, let's see, we're doing, is Pam here? Oh yes, she is. Okay. Legislative review, twenty twenty five mill levy ordinance, second reading. Hey Pam.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, this is the second reading for the twenty twenty five Town of Breckenridge, uh, property tax mill levy. This ordinance is setting the mill levy at five point zero seven mils. This is the amount that the town is authorized to impose. Uh, we cannot increase that amount without an election. We've had that same rate since two thousand and fourteen. For the twenty twenty five budget year, uh, we forecast five point zero seven mill levy to result in property tax revenues of five point one. We recommend that the council approve the five point zero seven mill levy, um, upon second reading. And to answer your question from first reading, Jay, uh, million dollar residential property would result in three hundred and twenty one dollars and seven cents. For the town. I'm happy to take any other questions.
Thanks Pam.
Thank you. I appreciate you, uh, you know, calling that out because I think, you know, we've gotten some comments to council as well as some misconceptions of, uh. How much money the mill levy actually means for the town. And so I appreciate you putting that perspective for everyone.
You said three twenty one?
Thirty one dollars for a residential property.
It's probably better to make comments at, at the, um, full meeting tonight.
Sure.
Yeah.
When people are here?
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Thank you very much, Pam.
Thank you.
Just talk a little bit about, um, not having the appropriation for the budget on the agenda. Cause I think maybe council, we had, um, you approved the budget by resolution. We had talked about bringing back ordinance to actually appropriate the funding and so Keely's done a review. Um, and so I'd like her just to talk about the change in, in what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Yeah, I'm happy to. So, um, we, basically we were doing an extra step that you guys didn't need to do. And per the town charter by approving, um, the budget by resolution, which is how you're supposed to do it, that also appropriates the money. So you don't need to do a separate appropriation. So that's the, yep.
One less thing on your agenda.
Efficient streamlined.
Yes.
We'll only do the appropriations down the road when there, there's changes to the budget. Gotcha.
That's great. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Okay. Are you to, to move on to manager's report? Public projects update, Shannon?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In the memo, I have a bit of a decision point for you on the Ball Field Pavilion project. We've reviewed the restrooms and our design team is recommending we demo them. They are very much behind any accessible standards and general building standards at this point. And trying to retrofit them will probably be more costly than rebuilding. We are going to investigate the water and sewer lines to make sure it makes sense to rebuild in the same location. And if those are sized appropriately, we would probably build right in the same location to save some money on installing water and sewer if we don't need to. Wanted to get a read on the council if they support that.
Any questions? Yeah.
All right, go ahead Jay.
I was just, let me ask, I know you put out an RFP for that, that entire area. And just curious about for the Ball Field Pavilion, what the, you know, what the minimal to do to some of the more. Aggressive, um. Uh, proposals were and like kind of what we're looking like on price point and if you can remind us what the budget was for CIP in the CIP.
Sure, um, we're coming on the tenth of December to show you some schematic options. We aren't going big on any of the work. We only budgeted a million dollars as a placeholder. It'll probably be a little bit more than that. We had originally had three million, but we scaled it back to just do this first phase. Minimum to get accessibility through the site and the restroom is functional. So we're looking at, you know, sort of regrading for the accessibility piece, making connections to the rec path. Um, having a location for shade shelter that could be a phase two, bedding cages and restrooms. Um, so pretty limited in my opinion scope. We did pull back on having a, another turfed warmup area. Because that was getting rather pricey with regrading, so we're really not even programming that right now. If you want us to shift gears and really show you a high end model, we can. We didn't really feel like that was the direction of the council.
Do, do you feel like that we have enough information now to select the, the right location and design? For these restrooms, um, in relation to kind of, you know, if, if we were going to phase the amenities. Through the, where the facility or, you know, you know, phase the approach over ten years, say, I. I just wanted to be sure we get the restrooms, you know, we build them the right way in the right place and all of that. So you feel like you have the information to be able?
Yeah, we feel pretty good that it's still a good call to leave them where they are. We are going to just, obviously we're going to demo the whole thing. We're going to take out. The other structure that's there that used to be an office and really just do a smaller restroom facility. Right now we're working on how big that needs to be for capacity for the ball fields and going back and forth and what type of design to do there. But I feel pretty confident though, that's a good spot for them.
Okay. And you, is the million bucks enough or?
Pricing for a bit. I'm sure it'll be more than a million.
I was wondering.
But that's why we said we'd do it phased.
Yeah, that's why we'll do it phased. We'll see, I mean, we, we need functional restrooms, so we'll see how much that costs. We need to regrade and get accessibility through there and we'll, we'll see where we land. And then the other things like the shade structure and those other areas can be added in and maybe we can get some sponsorships or some grants.
Yeah.
But yeah, we haven't gotten to pricing yet. We're still on conceptual level.
Yeah, I just, um, you know, I think it's such a important amenity to the community and we invested so much to make it an even. Greater amenity to the community with the turf and I want to make sure ultimately, it might take ten years or more. But I want to make sure ultimately that we really maximize our opportunities there.
And I think we are. I think we're heading in the great direction of the project.
And I think similarly, or the flip side of that is that we don't build anything now that we end up taking out in five years.
I was, I've already been thinking, could we put the foundations in for the shade structure now? So then when we have additional funding, we can just build up from there. So we're really looking at it.
Okay.
And our design team, um, also understands the importance of that. It's pretty typical for a public park to have to be phased. Based on funding availability.
As part of that phasing, is there any thought of doing an enclosed structure similar to like Carter Park to maybe take the pressure off of? Carter Park being booked out all the time?
I don't think we have enough space there.
Okay.
It's pretty squeezed.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
And Jen, I'm sure you've done this, but I would just ask that, um, you know, um, high country soccer, softball. Uh, league and the high school so, uh, baseball team are just brought in on this so that they have buy-in in, on the ground level and that. Their voices are heard on amenities that they would like to see, you know, and whether, you know, we can accommodate that or not right away. But just to have that in that master plan.
Perfect. Yeah, I want to bring the concept to council, make sure you guys are on board and then we'll launch the public outreach to get comments from. You know, the user groups, like you said, and then the general public. And I'll lean on the rec staff to really lead that because those are their people more than. They have those relationships already.
Great.
Um, yeah, anything else? Ice rink, hopefully we have concrete going back in this week. On the heated sidewalk rebuild we're doing for the front entrances. And we got delayed, uh, quite a bit with the weather, but the teams are out there pushing through in combine. It's helpful that they can get some concrete out there this week.
Lot of action on, uh, Schoonover?
Yeah, that's looking great, huh?
Yeah. How did, uh, did it go as expected after?
Well, the schedule was much longer than expected, but that's sort of how construction goes these days. You think you're going to get something done in a week and outside agency takes eight weeks. Um, that should be coming to a close here shortly. We're going to cap off that site for winter, put some barriers so nobody walks through there. Get injured and then try to get that bike plaza stood up first thing next spring. So it'll just be kind of a snowy open lot for the winter.
Did you, did you have anything on the Broken Lands?
Um, we had a pre-proposal meeting today. I think we had four companies show up, so we're excited that we'll have some multiple. Bidding bids to evaluate. And we're not doing a low bid. We're doing a proposal so we can select the correct contractor team. Get them as, on board as more as a construction manager and then work together to finalize the schedule and the pricing. Taking a different approach on this one because it's a, it's a big project and I think forcing a low bid might not be the best. Result for the town.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Mobility, Matt.
Good afternoon again, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, two updates to your packet. Uh, the upper one month shuttle will begin on November twenty seventh, uh, with the same service we had last year. And, uh, Peak One is the contractor again this year as well, so. November twenty seventh, day before Thanksgiving. Um, additionally, the ridership, I've had some questions about ridership around the purple route. Um, mainly the purple B route where we've seen some drop in ridership. Um, we believe it's really due to two different things that are going on. One of them is the success of the trolley route. Um, that's picking up people and taking them up the main street area where they want to be. So that's, we're not technically losing those riders. We don't believe. But also, we made a change last year or earlier this spring where we have been running the Purple A and then in the evening, we're running the Purple B. So morning time A, evening time B, that's impacted ridership as well. As noted in here, we're beginning winter service this Friday, which brings back that Purple A and Purple B all day long. So we should see ridership start to pick up. But I would also say, due to the trolley being wildly successful, we probably won't see that full pickup back to the normal number of the Purple B Route. So I would be happy to take any questions.
Is that how we always will do the winter service? Is that we'll do it both directions?
The intent is that the service would run year-round in that fashion.
Okay.
Just with, initially, it was staff. We are fully staffed. We're a very happy, fantastic team. Now it's really the fleet. And it's kind of the way transit often works is it's, you know, if it's not one, it's the other. And right now, it's the fleet. You know, our, our team is doing a great job keeping the buses on the road, but we are definitely struggling, even with some newer buses in the fleet.
Matt, do you think it's necessary to have both year-round?
With the trolley, possibly not.
I'd love to look into that a little deeper.
Totally.
Yeah, I'd love to hear your recommendation.
Yeah. And we are very focused, Judd and Andy are very focused on the numbers and the ridership, making sure we're meeting everybody's needs. But if there's efficiencies to be had, they're very good at pointing those out for us.
Right. Exactly what we want. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, sustainability, Jessie. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll start off, I understand there were some questions about the letter from the scrap that was included in this memo. And I apologize for not providing more context. So a little bit of background. As Hayden has been out talking with businesses about single-use plastics and universal recycling, he has heard that there have been several businesses that are essentially circumnavigating, participating in a curbside program. And they are doing their recycling at the Breckenridge Recycling Centers. And so he and HC3 reached out to the scrap to clarify their policy around that, which resulted in the letter that we got. So we are not being asked to do anything except continue to share the policy that has been on the books forever. And that is to say that commercial use of those enclosed, or not the enclosures, excuse me, the, the drop-off centers is, is essentially prohibited. And they do ask and request that commercial loads go directly up to the scrap. And so we have that letter now. And as Hayden continues to do his outreach on our programming, he can also share that information with businesses as he goes. So happy to answer any questions about that, but apologies if that wasn't more clear. Okay.
Do you think that's the best, I mean, is it a real problem? Like, they actually fill up early? I'm just happy people are recycling.
Well, we just debated that at staff, staff level yesterday. We were like, well, people are recycling. The trouble that they see is that there's a lot of illegal dumping.
Yeah.
And so you'll get, for example, a contractor or a property management company that has cleared out a unit. And instead of hauling that directly to the scrap where it can be sorted and, and paid for, they're using the free drop-off centers for a commercial purpose. And so while we do want to see the recycling, it, it often comes with illegal dumping, which, which was the driving force behind them removing the metal at the beginning of this year. And they have seen considerable improvement because they removed the scrap metal. But now we run the risk of people throwing stuff out because they don't want to go up to the scrap. So it's, it's definitely a catch-22. And we continue to have conversations with HC3 and Scrap staff about this very issue. And they do see, especially like during peak times, they cannot handle additional commercial waste.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I, I'm with you because I know some businesses that are, you know, they, that are recycling on-site and, you know, and commercially. And, and when they get just a surge, you know, at the beginning of a season, they get a bunch of bikes, a bunch of skis, whatever, and they'll take the load of, one load, you know, cardboard to the, to the site because it would overwhelm the private on-site, you know.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that there's a lot of argument around the one-off situations. It's the folks that have made a business out of using the free commercial drop centers. And that, that's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the intention's really good and the one-offs that I'm talking about. So, good, that's good to hear.
Yeah. Another recycling note, just hot off the press this morning. HC3 and Scrap have crunched the numbers on curbside recycling since October 23, when Pay As You Throw has gone into effect. And we've seen a 16% increase in curbside recycling.
Where does that take us?
We've been hovering around 20, 21%. So 16% brings you to 36, 37. That is not a full, well, it is a full year, but it's from October 23 through September 2024. That is a county-wide number. So they also looked at, did municipal solid waste increase? Like, can we attribute that to pay as you throw? And every way that they crunched the numbers, they were able to attribute it to pay as you throw policy in Breckenridge and in Frisco. The BOCC did approve Pay As You Throw and they will be, so this news came out to help support the forum that they have on Thursday for unincorporated Summit County to talk more about pay as you throw rollout, et cetera. So it's really good news. The other thing related to that that they did see was they also saw a price decrease if people chose to downsize their trash. So that narrative we were hoping for and promising really did come to fruition. So we did see that price decrease.
Jessie, when you collect data, you know, I, like, we don't, we don't get reced side recycling at home because I don't trust the haulers. So I just take it myself, residential. And is there a place to opt? You know, when you're collecting data, whether it's coming from the haulers or not, just to say, it's not that I'm not recycling.
Yeah.
It's that I do it myself.
Well, the numbers that we're getting are actually coming across the scale house. So no matter how you're recycling, whether it comes from the drop center, it's marked as drop center and source separated, or it's coming from curbside and it's getting marked as such. So the numbers that we have are already taking that into consideration.
Great.
Have we had any feedback on how much trash? Like, I know that was one of the big issues that we had is that there was so much contamination in the recycling. Has that increased now that we're forcing people to recycle?
No, we've seen, and I, I asked that question again today based on these numbers and did not get a response. But the, the most recent response I have received was that contamination has remained flat.
Great.
Still a little higher probably than we want to see it, but that it's remained flat and it hasn't driven increased contamination.
Great.
Um, we are delivering with the e-delivery. Yesterday, we started deliveries. Tuesdays, 10, it sounds like Tuesdays are the lighter days, so we don't have as many trucks in town on Tuesdays. But we are on day two and things are going smoothly. So that's great news. And then lastly, I was just up at Brett Grand Vacations. They received Environmental Protection Agency Pollution Prevention Award for their snowmelt at GC8. And I promised that I would relay that information to you all today. So congratulations to them. It's their third such award. And, uh,
Just based on the controls you're using?
Yeah, their refinement and their, their weatherization of the system and, and things that, you know, we have explored and are using also at the parking garage. But they've really worked with a technology company to refine that. And I also asked the AI question on, like, is AI helping you drive this? And they're like, not yet. It's, it's still kind of a little human-powered. But, um, so it was, it was cool to see the behind-the-scenes system and, and learn a little bit more about the work that they've been doing. So.
Right.
Congratulations to them.
Good for them.
Any other questions with memo? Okay, thanks.
All right. Do we have a housing update?
Nothing today.
Okay. Open space update. Duke, we have any, we have meeting minutes? Any questions? Almost. All right. Moving right along. Committee reports. We had a couple. Any questions on committee reports? Nope. All right, John's ready for it. Rec events. You look really smooth.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. You have the meeting minutes and memo in front of you. Biggest thing, I know Marika talked to some of you guys offline about Brett Create is going to research a potential drone show. Probably a 2026. Potential for us, maybe not a 2025, it's 4th of July, it's on a Friday night, but we'll come back, eh, the second meeting in January and give you guys those findings. And then in the minutes, there's this thing that says, looking to get younger. I know Scott pointed that out. I, I did this hastily last week when I was out of town. So the Uler,
We all are, John.
The Uler Fest Brigade that chooses the king and queen apparently wants to have a younger king and queen this year. That's what that means. So just clarifying that for you all. But it could be someone older too. I don't know. I'm not involved in that. So, any question?
Any question? So I just wanted to remind everyone that there was a very cool drone show put on by, I believe it was a high school.
It was.
So I don't know if there is a way to?
They're booked.
Okay.
For the fourth.
Twenty-six.
But we've, no, but we've asked them about maybe the third or the fifth as potential for somebody to come. And then Park City did.
If they can train our high school to do something.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think, I would love to look outside the box with this. And maybe 4th of July is too big of a holiday for us, holiday for us to put in the high school's hands, but, um, I don't know. I think we should start being creative with how we can get our high schoolers to do cool things like that. I mean, that one that they did last year, or that the high schoolers, not our high school.
Excellent.
It was excellent. It was very cool. So anyway, I don't know if that could get traction, but.
I think engagement on that Friday night's really important, given feedback last year.
Mm-hmm. And people leaving.
Yeah.
Uh, and afternoon.
Yeah.
On 4th of July. I think I got a lot more engagement around, I got a lot more comments about better engagement, more, you know, more compelling engagement from the parade to dinnertime. I mean, the perception of many businesses was down empty.
Yep.
Dick, in our discussion with Brett Create, we did talk about how there used to be a 2:00 PM concert at the Riverwalk Center. And that is something that could be looked at. Currently, I think they have $7,500 budgeted for that day. To find a medium-tier band is looking more like a $15,000 number, I think, to, to have, to leading up to that NRO evening performance. So.
Yeah, we did get a lot of feedback on that weekend especially.
And we may have, there may be some really great information in January that we can share with you. So, yeah. Any other questions?
I guess I want to just highlight, you know, and almost say a different angle on what Kelly said is that I think it's important, as much as it is to create attraction for July 4th, I think it's more important, or at least as important, to have these connections with our school district of, you know, we talk a lot about the CTE program and to have a multi-dimensional relationship with the school district where we can embrace their kind of more technical or tech-savvy programs and to provide a ability to have a reciprocal relationship there where we're encouraging the high school to have those tech programs because there's an outlet to showcase what they're doing. And I think that anytime an opportunity like that shows itself, I think we really need to embrace it because it's, it's, it's for our kids, you know, and it's, it's for the, the future of that, that program.
So it'll take, um, to make sure that the school district and Brett Creator are talking as this venture moves forward too. So, thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We're already into planning matters. Shannon, do you want to switch this around? Do we have?
We can. I'm not sure. Is everybody?
We don't have all the fire people here.
Quick break?
Or why don't we start with that and then we'll get reorganized?
Okay.
We're gonna take a half hour break. Never been this far ahead of schedule. Cliff. Countywide.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the record, Cliff Cross, Planner 2. So usually annually, we bring an update to the council just to provide mitigation efforts countywide and just update you on some other projects that are going on in the upper blue. So first, I want to kind of highlight, we've got quite a few partners with us today. Few of me sneak in while we're giving the update, but it covers both Town of Breckenridge, some other community partners, as well as the Colorado State Forest Service and the US Forest Service. So primarily, I just want to give a quick overview of the permits that the town has processed. Realistically, over the past two years, we've been able to process over 170 permits, which is really awesome, because it is implementing defensible space through all kinds of private property, town-owned property, as well as open space owned by HOAs. And then finally, I do want to give a really big shout out. Earlier this year, we were able to make those code amendments to Policy 22 and 48, realigning our code with our community partners and kind of adding that zero to five foot zone. We've seen a lot of people kind of take advantage of this, being able to kind of remove that combustible material and hopefully impact their insurance premiums. So first, I guess I'll give it over to Dan Schroeder, and he'll give a short update on some stuff for you guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Well done on the permits, Cliff.
Hello, Dan Schroeder, Colorado State University Extension Director in Summit County. I'm merely wildfire council. Summit County Wildfire Council has 11 voting bodies, each town, state forest service, federal. And we have River Basin Representatives as well. And so the majority of what I'm going to talk about, I don't need to talk too much about the chipping program. Really what I want to say though is it's a, an action-oriented outreach education opportunity. So really, I think it serves two purposes, and the main one is to keep this issue on people's minds. So we all have a mind filter. Wildfire could just fall through with the rest of it. And this team makes sure that, we make sure, to make sure that we keep this in people's mind filters. The chipping program keeps the messages out there and gives people action opportunities. I think that's the biggest one. If you put a stick or two out, that's great. And I know that's great because I know you heard the message, which is actually the important part. I think that's about what I have to share. Oh, something that's exciting is this is 11 years later, and it's always exciting because something different always happens. And we got lucky last year that the contractor was interested in taking all the material every time he filled a box to the landfill compost creation component of scrap. And that's never happened before. There's always been a landing in the upper blue and the lower blue. Contractor dumps, keeps going, dumps, keeps going. That's the efficiency of it. And we're running into that again. So I really want to say thank you to Town of Breckenridge for the years that you've allowed the chipping program to dump on chips on what is now the runway subdivision. So we're looking for a new spot in the upper blue to dump in the meantime, before it ultimately makes its final resting place at the landfill.
Okay, so that's an intermediate area.
It is. You know, if you're clearing chips and you get a 30 yard box from Hoosier Pass to drive all the way over to Keystone to scrap and back, takes half a day driving when you could have been chipping. Anyhow, just want to let you know that I'm looking for creative solutions, and this monkey mind might come up with something. On that note, I'd like to pass it to.
Now, any, before he leaves, any questions for Dan?
The chipping, most importantly, keeps us from procrastinating. Because we have a date, it's got to be on the car.
Well said. And you've been on track so far. Thanks for that, Dick.
Vision and procrastination. All right. Thank you very much, Dan. Thanks for your work on the chipping program.
Good afternoon. So I was asked to come in and kind of give an update from red, white, and blue specifically, but then also talk to the bigger issue that has been coming up. And I guess you guys have heard about this with the insurance issues. We have certainly experienced that. So from red, white, and blues point of view, we want first to acknowledge the collaboration piece. And you can see from behind me that we come well armed with colleagues. And, and that really is the success of, of the wildfire preparedness and the response to, because it's all the same people that show up for that. But from a preparedness point of view, this is why it's successful, is all of these people. And we want to talk to that. And it was interesting hearing Cliff talk about the amount of permits that came in this year. And I think that's a real testament to that code change and working as one big group, similar voice across the board. Now we're all talking the same language. The customers are clearly, or the residents are clearly less confused with what they can do, what they should do. And they're going to get permits to do it. And, and that's a huge deal because that wasn't the case just a couple of years ago. We were getting 20 or 30 permits a year at that point, and we're seeing a gigantic increase in that. So that's actionable. That's what's happening on the ground. We love that. As far as we're concerned, you know, we see very similar numbers. We're visiting face to face with around 100 single-family homeowners. The biggest change we've seen really involves the property managers. They've become our, kind of our force multiplier this year, and, and that's a big deal for us. We've spent a lot of time educating them, but they're motivated. They're motivated because of the insurance issues. So let's get right into the insurance issues. We're seeing, some of our big properties have seen upwards of 1,000% increases. It's not unheard of. Some of them were very old policies that suddenly got updated and saw that 1,000% increase. But many of them really, it became an insurance, a number issue. The values are way up, the construction costs are way up, and there's this red zone that has been laid over the top of us in maps. So what did we do? We reacted a couple of years ago, I think it was the first time I brought it up to you guys, that insurance was going to be the issue coming up, and it has been the issue. And did not see my career going this direction at all, coming off the rigs. But this is where we're at. And tonight, we're going to be meeting at 6 o'clock with the insurance folks from the state to kind of hear more about it and see maybe if there's some solutions coming up. We're hoping for some solutions. But instead of just waiting for that to come to us, we managed to get our hands on some of the checklist, and we built, we built basically an inspection form using our software that we already had at the fire department. And we basically created an inspection that mirrored what they were looking for. Nicely, it also mirrored what we were looking for. Insurance companies have the same information we do, right? They probably have better information in some ways. So we built new forms, and my personal record is 30 minutes having someone reinsured after seeing the checklist delivered to the insurance broker. So this is not everyone. Some of them I've helped, some of them have gotten reductions. Some of them have just found insurance in other places, but then those forms help. So this is where we're going. We're, we're being, we're trying to be as flexible as we can. As we move forward, we're trying to be as nimble as we can. We change these forms probably a couple of times a year as we get more feedback from the insurance companies, but we have the ability to do that. This is not something we're tied to and we're going to see for the next 20 years, the same form. But the beauty of it is it pretty much mirrors the code language in the Town of Brex codes. Because that was firewise language that was put in there. So it makes it very simple for the residents. And simple is good. Simple creates results. And we love that. So.
So are, how would the public, if someone got denied for fire insurance, what would they do? Would they call?
So they can. Yep, they can, they can call, they can email, really just get in touch with us. They'll get forwarded to me. And then I'll go out and, and do it. And we do have a team of firefighters that do do these insurance-related inspections. But it's mostly me.
And is that happening countywide?
It is. Yeah. My colleague Hannah Olson at Summit Fire, some of you guys may know, she's a longtime local. We basically, we have the same form. So we're actually currently in an edited, editing phase right now. But once we're done with that, we basically clone it over. So we're both using the exact same forms. We are currently looking for a better software solution because we're pretty much maxing out this one. But until that happens, we'll do it the whole, the hard way and, and just clone them back and forth and, and do as we can. So, yeah.
That's fantastic.
It's, our goal is really, truly, no excuses, same message, and then make the solutions as easy as possible, right down to the fact that you can come by and borrow our tools. We have a loaner program. You can come use ours. We don't care if you own 15 homes or one home, or if you're renting, or we don't really care. Come by, use our tools. That's what they're there for.
Wow.
Yeah.
Great information.
Matt, are you willing to come? I mean, you do an inspection, you point out things that need to be taken care of. I appreciate you've done my house a couple of times. And, and then you'll come back and, and then re-inspect with the intent of providing that form with some kind of official certification.
It won't be a certification, but it'll just be reflected in the form. The form has pictures in it. We upload all kinds of pictures into it and all that. We're trying to avoid the certification aspect because really what you're certifying is, is that moment right there. The aspen leaves fall down and then you start over.
Yeah, so and you'll learn more tonight, I'm assuming.
We're hoping. Yeah, there are definitely agencies out there that are trying to go down the certification route. It's a challenge. But you know, if that's what the insurance companies really want, we'll figure it out.
Because we're hearing, I mean, single-family homes are great, but, but some of the older multi-unit complexes are really strange, which is where a lot of our workforce lives. And they're really, really struggling with insurance, which is making these homes for our workforce unaffordable.
Yes.
Because the HOAs have to go up so much.
The, and the numbers I'm hearing are astronomical, you know. I used to say, well, you know, no, nothing's going up that high. It's absolutely going up that high. And, and it's causing huge issues because the dues are doubling or tripling. It's nearly bankrupting some of the HOAs. I'm hoping that the state has at least a position on it, something. The problem we see over and over is this is private industry, and we are public agencies, and we don't mix The problem we've seen over and over is this is private industry and we are public agencies and we don't mix super well. There are some laws that prevent us from, um, interacting too much, I guess. But we need their information and we need them. Really, the next step in all of this is to go into a marketing phase for Summit County. And that's what we're going to be working with, uh, the wildfire council to try and tell a better story. I actually have a, a high school student that's going to be doing an internship with me. And we're going to be working on that exact concept, starting in January, is trying to figure out a better marketing strategy for, one, the homeowners, but really the insurance companies. How to move this forward and get insurance companies to want to be here and assume that risk. Yes.
Great.
It's a top priority. Whether we can move the needle or not is, you know, yet to be seen.
If we can just simply move the needle some, it helps.
Something. Yes.
We're trying.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks for doing that.
Awesome.
Really important.
Thank you.
Important component of our workforce housing programming too.
Yes.
Because it really is making it.
It seems to be affecting them the most.
Yeah.
Some can afford this.
Right.
And others can't.
Right.
So.
Thank you very much. And I'm glad you're using a high school student.
I know, it's exciting. Hopefully we'll get a good product too.
You will.
Yeah. All right.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Francisco Murphy. I am the new Summit County Forester for the Colorado State Forest Service. It's been a couple of years since we've had someone local, so I'm excited to be here. Only three months, so that's why I brought my, a list of, uh, things to say to you. Just to give a broad overview, um, so we have done, we have done a lot of fuels reduction projects in partnership with the feds, Summit County and towns, uh, but there is much more to do. As we know, trees do grow back and continued main, continued maintenance is, uh, critical for our work. So all of our projects ranges from public land, federal land to private land. We are working on, the, all the projects that we are working on are identified and prioritized as high from the Summit County Wildfire Protection Plan and also the Wildfire Council. Uh, we really appreciate the Town of Breck, uh, support and past projects and also moving forward. A couple of projects that are maybe of interest for the council. So Blue River East, um, it's, uh, Colorado State Forest Service-led, uh, GNA, Good Neighbor Authority Fuels Reduction and Forest Health Project. It's 82 acres. Um, and of those 82 acres, 13.5 are in the Town of Breck and also, um, Summit County open space. Funding comes from the, uh, the SSF, the TNC, and also from the federal, uh, government. And the start date for that will be summer 2025. The other project is the same, uh, Colorado State Forest Service-led Good Neighbor Authority Fuels Reduction and Forest Health Project, and it's called the Frisco Backyard. Right now, um, the fed's behind, I could give a little bit more of an overview of what's going on, but the need process is still ongoing. Area prioritization is still ongoing. Recon, we just started a couple of weeks ago, um, and then the snow came. Um, and also the outreach to other landowners and see if we can incorporate other areas, uh, has also started for that. This is a very big multimillion dollar project, uh, with multiple phases. It's going to be from 2025 to 2028. And the start date for that, we're hoping either late summer 2025 or summer 2026. And lastly, here in Breck, we have a Peak Seven Blowdown Project. So basically there was a, a big project that was incorporated in Peak Seven. Unfortunately, there was a huge, uh, uh, wind throw event that happened. And, uh, right now we were supposed to be cleaning it up last week, but with all the snow, uh, we would have to postpone it till next summer. I think that's it for me.
Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Happy to have you.
I'll take this one. Hi, my name is Kat Gray. I'm detailed as the forest fuels planner for the White River. I've been the district fuels planner for the past several years. And Dusty, you wanted?
Sure. Dusty Kalfi, I'm currently detailed and is the, the Dillon fuels planner, having, uh, been the engine captain for the Dillon Ranger District for a number of years now. Moving forward, I have a tentative offer for the Assistant Fire Management Officer for fuels, uh, within the, the east zone. So that'll encompass the White River National Forest for both Eagle and Summit County.
So I gave to Cliff, I'm sure it's in your packet, some numbers on what we've accomplished. I think the last time that we gave you all an update was spring of 23, so I included last summer and this summer projects. But I just wanted to highlight a few really great successes we've had. Last summer, we had our Peabody Placer contract, which was a state forest service, administered contracts cross boundary. So it was state forest service, or sorry, excuse me, federal, uh, forest service, uh, Town of Breck and Summit County open space. And there's some photos in there too, of before and after drone pictures. Just a great example of our partnerships being able to cross these property lines. We also had our 2024, this summer, we had a dispersed recreation crew, which was six people funded by Strong Future Funds. And this is the public education piece of our fire prevention. So they are out there talking to campers in highly visited areas along Boreas Pass and other front country recreation areas. So they made over 2,300 public contacts. They found eight abandoned campfires. They cleaned up a lot of trash. They take care of abandoned structures they find in the forest. So that's just a really important, uh, piece of the puzzle as well. And the last thing I wanted to highlight was the Wellington Fire we had in July, which was, I'm sure you all saw it on the hillside, if you were around. It was kind of big news for a day or two. And then our suppression folks got a really great handle on it. And part of the reason for that was that it was within the 2021 cross boundary Wellington Fuels Project that we did with the state forest service. So this is just one of those examples of if we do our jobs well, we don't really hear about our successes because they're not a big deal. So I just wanted to point that out and yeah, that's why we're doing the work we're doing.
And that's a very big deal.
Yeah. I know, it kind of like goes under the radar after a day or two when the smoke is gone, but it could have been a very different story.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. And we're just gearing up for pile burning now in the winter. And happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Kat? Thank you very much. Good work out there. Yeah, sure.
I just, I, I so much appreciate it. Seeing all the representation of so many different agencies around our forest and how much I really appreciate how well you all work together. It's very, very impressive. And, uh, I'm very grateful for it. It, it's huge. It's, it's a big deal.
Well said. Well, we appreciate your support.
So thank you. All right, do we have anything else, Cliff, from this group?
No. No, but if you do have any questions for Town of Breck staff, um, we have open space planning and PD here. If you did have any questions.
Thank you for the packet. There was a ton of information in there, which was really interesting and covered a lot. So any questions for staff? No? Thank you very much. And, um, we all echo Dick's comments that it's meaningful work and Kat's comments about thankfully these issues don't become big front page headlines and we're thrilled to have had the last couple of summers that we have. So working together, we'll keep, keep that up. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think a few more, yes, chairs are coming down. We have a crew to talk to us. Next up is the runway development and. Someone has to sit in the chairs. Otherwise it's just weird. Um, thank you guys for being here. Lori?
Yeah, thank you. This is super exciting for us. You know, our, our design has evolved quite a bit from the last time we met in June. We've been, uh, working closely with Suzanne and with Elena and their team, to come up with a layout that we really like in terms of the number of units, the split of units, the out of the roads and things. And we, you know, um, do want to take time today to go through the design and the layout and our recommendations. And, you know, I think, um, the time that we've spent on this, um, we just really do want to get this neighborhood right and we want your feedback. So, um, and that's why we're all here is to hear what you really want. Because, um, you know, as we design this neighborhood, we need to know what we're building so that we can actually come up with good pricing and understand what the town's contribution would have to be. So, um, that's what we're hoping to, to focus the conversation on today is sort of the, the number of units, the, the split of types of units a little bit and then the general, um, alignment. And if we get that, that would enable us to move forward with some more due diligence. And I consider the civil plan to be due diligence. It, you know, helps us know what we are building and what it's going to cost to build and that it really works. We often see where we have, you know, a schematic design and until we put it to civil, you don't really know if it all fits. You don't know if you can comment at your snow storage and your landscaping and all of that sort of thing. So we do believe that moving into the next step, um, with civil will help us with our initial due diligence and our, our sort of upfront sort of, um, design of this project. So the memo, um, outlined a lot of things. I do want to, um, adjust a couple of things before I turn it over to, um, Elena to take us through the plan. But I think the plan that we have does respond to the priorities that you laid out last time is prioritizing sustainability. We want to continue to evaluate geothermal, super, super, super exciting. And we're probably as excited as you guys might be about that opportunity. We want to get it right though. And I think, I know you are super excited about it. The, um, one thing I think we've done well in this layout is, um, we heard loud and clear about not sort of having our, our units so segregated. It would really try to disperse the, the lower AMI units with the higher AMI units. So you can't tell. So, um, there's lots of things that we, we like about this plan. There were some questions that came up kind of on the chart and, um, I did want to clarify before we get into the presentation. There were questions about the AMI targets, but in addition to increasing the number of units above the 100 that we were thinking about before, it just didn't make any sense once we started evaluating the site. We would be under elyseum in the site if we went with only 100. So we really support a higher number of units. In order to be able to target some really low price points, we have a large number of single family homes that are 140% AMI, some 150% AMI and some 160% AMI. We still believe there is demand for those higher AMI single family homes. And they really, really do help us target the lower AMI units and hit some price points where we think we have significant demand in the community. But, um, go ahead.
So we have, you had talked about 140, 150, 160. Does that include also the deed restricted light?
No, the deed restriction light would not have an AMI target.
Okay.
Kind of be what the market would bear. And from what we've seen in Frisco with Peak One, um, there are higher income working families in our community that would love the opportunity to live in this neighborhood. And, um, you know, we believe those units may be, um, above 1 million, yeah.
Maybe, pardon me?
Above a million, 1, 1.11. And, you know, that significantly helps us buy down and get some units that are 282,000 for an entry level buying opportunity. So, um.
But those still come, just to clarify Kelly's question, still come with a full deed?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Well, they have to be, um, occupied by somebody working locally. There's no appreciation cap.
Okay. So a light?
Restriction light, which we think there's value in deed restriction lights. So I wanted to clarify, the AMI targets went up a little bit. The, um, number of units went up a little bit.
Actually, just to clarify, when do we, when does it change from a full deed restriction to a deed restriction light?
It's just if there's an appreciation cap on.
Oh, I know, but is there a certain AMI where that?
In our, in our plan, we're having all of our, um, well, right now we've targeted the 140 to 160% AMI in our single families. But if you all are supportive of a deed restriction light, we would probably take a couple of those or a handful of those and convert those to, um, no appreciation cap, no AMI target.
Yeah. I'd love to see, you know, and we can do this later, but to pick an AMI, you know, anything over 140 or anything over 150 gets a light, you know, because it's helping us, you know, subsize the others. But I think it's a quality. We don't need to answer it now, but at some point I'd love to have it, just so people know.
It's important, you know, before we really want to get into finalizing the sale prices, we need to know what our costs are. We need to know how many units we're building. Are, are we including a geothermal system? Are we not? And those are the kinds of things that we still need to work on over the next month or two months or however long it takes. The other issue I wanted to talk about, somebody had asked, you know, what is infrastructure? What's going to show on our civil plan? The infrastructure budget is, well, you know exactly what the infrastructure budget is, but, um, it is over X. You know, that soils and bringing in dirt, taking out dirt. It's water sewer lines, it's, um, Excel's, um, service lines, it's storm sewer lines, earthwork, asphalt curb, gutter sidewalks. That's what we're talking about with infrastructure. And we really can't price that until we know how much asphalt do we have? How many roads do we have? How many units do we have? So that's, you know, really what we're hoping to get some direction from you guys about sort of, um, we had some questions at the end and we can go through those questions after, um, our presentation. And I think that's all I had to launch this.
All right, Elena.
Hi, everybody. Elena Scott with Norris Design. Great to see you. Here with Suzanne. So both of us are here to answer any questions, but did want to start with the last time we chatted with you, which was, I believe, July of 2024, when we were looking at close to 100 units and talking about what's most important with this community. And so what's up on the slide? It's also in the staff memo, but you know, one of the biggest things to us was this is our last big neighborhood that we get to do. How do we ensure it's special? How do we make sure it's, it stands the tested time? It's going to be durable. It's going to look good. It's sustainable. And so that was one of the key things that we went into, um, redeveloping the plan with architecture team and reworking to where we are today. You know, what, what's making this special? How are we grounding this place? And what makes Breckenridge so special and, um, viewing our open spaces and creating, uh, connected neighborhoods? That's, you know, great for people to gather. We spend a lot of time, um, talking through the mix of units, the spectrum of housing types, trying to hit more of that. You know, can we get closer to, you know, a third, third, third split? What happens if we do more single families versus less? Um, and then we spend a whole lot of time on the sustainability front, really getting into, okay, if my roof pitches here, how do I maximize my solar to the best possible orientation and orient our street grid in a manner that reflects that? We also have explored ADUs. We talked a lot about ADUs with you and ensuring people are well parked while also knowing that we're in an, an urban neighborhood that feels, um, like it's porch oriented and open space oriented and not parking oriented. And so we think that the plans that we'll present today really do achieve those goals. And then one of the other items we spent a lot of time talking about, not only with staff, um, but with you in initial conversations is ensuring we have those safe routes to school. Um, and I know top of mind lately has been traffic calming and ensuring our streets are safe and that people feel safe on the road. So. So our team has done a lot of working through that with, with the team, with the staff and our internal team to get all of those pieces to fit together. So we, we think we are in a really good spot. So when you see the plans today, you're going to see concept A as an overlay and then a concept A with a unit mix overlay that's color coded so that you can really see how we've intermixed all of the unit types. And then we have some additional graphics showing parking, traffic calming and multimodal connectivity, all the things that we're thinking about as well as snow storage. So we all know what we're talking about, but the runway neighborhood site is located here with access from Fraction Road and Floridora Road. It's just over 25 acres and the 2008 Block 11 master plan looked at a build two of up to 400 units between this site and the existing neighborhood. So Melanie had it really great in the packet. There's almost 200 units in the existing neighborhood. And so you'll see a couple of different, 191. You'll see a couple of different options on the runway site that show us where we get to in terms of where we were tracking back in 08. And we're really close toward the target while achieving the rest of all of our goals. So we have the 16 and a half acre site here that comes in from Fraction Road. As you all know, this site has several different easements and we finally got a really good survey that outlines those. We have a 25 foot gas line, a high pressure gas line that creates a, you know, what could be considered a separation from the property, but it's all underground. So it's not a separation. It just allows us to really extend open space from the neighborhood through those easements. And then a 50 foot brack sanitation easement. This eight and a half, 8.7 acres was the site that was previously the school district's property that was traded for McCain. That's now a part of Block 11. And so as part of this effort, we worked with staff to look at how do we incorporate a large snow storage reservoir within this community that serves all of Block 11, that also allows us to maintain a really great neighborhood feel connecting the school all the way to the existing Blue 52 and even further to CMC.
And just, uh, just one side point on some of those easements, there are dashed lines that aren't in red. We are working with the sand district to eliminate one of those easements. And then we're also working with, well, Melanie and the town are working to try to eliminate a couple of gas easements that we found out were temporary. So we've been working really hard to try to clean this property up and gain more space to build on.
Excellent point. From the school, just to point out a couple of things for those who aren't familiar, there's an easement here just north of Breck Terrace that comes into the property and connects to a 35 foot school district access easement. The school currently uses that for bus transportation. So, you know, besides just the easements we have for utilities, there are other, you know, ancillary access things that we've been thinking about when developing this plan. Also shown on this plan is some existing trails that are along the Blue River and the Blue River Rec Path. We know the importance of making connections there, so you'll see that in the plans as well. Okay, concept A. So just for orientation, coming from the north on Floridora Drive, and then Fraction Road is located here as our existing access points. One of the main things in thinking about this neighborhood as this great last neighborhood in Breck for our local community, making sure that this park really anchors this access point at Fraction Road and that that's well connected also all the way over to the rec path. So really trying to set up a party or a site diagram that's going to function well and be really livable over time. It also gives us a lot of phasing options. So our ability to have these alley systems and the way Floridora is set up does really help the overall team bring in units over time as necessary or, you know, bring in more. It can be flexible. This unit, this project or this plan, geez, shows an overall density of 139 units with up to 22 additional ADUs. So that's an important distinction between this plan and the other plan. And you'll see the difference in those is primarily when it comes into the number of townhomes that are integrated. So I'm going to go ahead and go to this one. You can see when you come in at the main park, we have townhome units framing that park. So kind of the higher density framing the park closest into the access from airport. From there, we have a variety of different types of single family homes, a single family cottage, a three bedroom with an ADU. So anytime you see the detached garage, there's an ADU and then a four bedroom option. On concept A, we have a lot more single family units in this plan. It's 47%, I believe. So this one does really max out the ability to have single family detached homes and ADUs. We'll get to a cross section in a minute, but one of the learning lessons from other neighborhoods is just ensuring if we're doing an alley loaded neighborhood, that those alleys are wide enough that we can really accommodate the things that need to happen in them. So we are showing a 20 foot wide alley. And then the alleys have a pretty significant amount of overflow guest parking in them as well as accounting for space for the ADU. So trying to be really thoughtful about ensuring that the neighborhood can park, but also not giving too much space to cars because we really want people to be using transit and riding their bicycles and the e-bike system when they can. So 139 is plus 22 ADU. We have 30% in duplexes. So you can see those are, these are the yellow ones. A lot of times we have those anchoring some corners and clustered together. And then we also have townhomes at 21% of the units on this plan. So this one's definitely more heavily weighted towards a single family neighborhood. All right, in concept two, as I mentioned, very similar in layout. The primary difference is that additional townhomes are located along Floridora to the west. That could give us a future mixed use opportunity if we wanted to later on, if that seemed appropriate in this zone. We really maintain a lot of the same open spaces and park functions. And then we continue to have, you know, a good mix of single family, townhome duplex. This one gets us a lot closer to that kind of third split. In this, I added it all up for you just so you can, hold on. What do we get to? 42% single family with ADUs in this one. Again, it's a 22 ADUs, 28% duplex and 30% townhome. So increase the unit count, it's 148 plus 22 ADUs. Increase the diversity of unit mix and split with this, but still maintain all of those really important organizing principles for the neighborhood and central park theme. All of the homes are alley loaded in both concepts. So there's a lot of front porches that are going to be visible from Floridora and on those park spaces. When you really look at how connected all these green spaces are to each other, it's really quite, it's a remarkable amount of open space between the plan that increases density and the one with single family. We will still maintain really significant amount of open space and connectivity through these neighborhoods where people can connect right down towards the river and in between neighborhoods. So we're really happy about that. A little bit on traffic calming. We spent a lot of time on the horizontal curvature of the road as it comes through. Having additional like tighter curves on the roads is one of our traffic calming measures. And so you can see where it says R110, R125. Those are some tighter curves that we've worked through with Public Works to make sure that we feel comfortable with that. We have crosswalks indicated as a, as a number two symbol. So there's going to be crosswalks throughout the neighborhood. And then we're proposing also two speed tables on Floridora. So those are the number three. And those would occur in these two locations conceptually. We also have two different bus stop locations planned within the neighborhood, both on Floridora, so on the main road. We know that every time we have a bus stop, we also have the ability to slow down traffic speeds, just people anticipating the bus coming out. And then you can see, you know, the distance to the bus stop in these radiuses. So how far people would be walking to the bus? Trail connection, sorry. Looking at a trail connection down to the Blue River Rec Path, as I mentioned before, and then a 10 foot sidewalk slash rec path that comes through the neighborhood, creating an extension of the 10 foot path that's in Blue 52. And here is a cross section. It'd be a 50 foot right of way, 24 foot drive lanes, a 10 foot snow storage zone on, labels behind this thing, but 10 foot snow storage zone, 10 foot path. And then a little bit of room for landscape and really, you know, putting most of the landscape into that front yard area of the homes.
If we go back to that last slide, we did work with the school district a bit on how they want to have the children come into the school. And so our bike, our path, our, our 10 foot walking path down Floridora will terminate at that school district property line and the kids will cross the street. And then they'll be on the other side of where all those buses and cars pull in the parking lot and stuff at upper blue. So we are working with them and trying to engage them as well.
That's a good point Suzanne, because at one point we had looked at if the kids should go on this side and the school district really preferred access coming from the west. And this is not open to vehic, like regular cars. It's only buses. Cross section. Here's a parking exhibit. So anytime you see the, the blue spaces, you can see some additional guest parking. And, and obviously if, if council wanted us to explore additional parking, you'd see the amount of open space we have. We can add more parking spaces, but it's our goal to balance the appropriate amount and not have to build extra spaces if, if we don't think we need them. Total parking count is at 354 on concept A. So good ratio. And then you can see per unit type how we're parking. The townhomes would have assigned off lot parking associated with each of the buildings. And so those are shown in red. And here is that parking table for concept B. The units have gone up, so the number of parking spaces has gone up. And again, you can see guest parking, the parking spaces that'll be associated with the townhomes. And then all the parking that's associated with the garage spaces and the surface spaces for the ADUs. And those are the kinds of details that once we better understand, you know, the right unit mix from your perspective, then we can further refine those details and come back with some adjustments. On the multimodals front, as Suzanne mentioned, here's the 10 foot rec path that will connect over to the school. And then in addition, trail connections just in through the neighborhood, taking advantage of these large easements that we have along the riverfront. And then truly connecting through to the bus and to, you know, from the Uller neighborhood over as well. One thing I had forgotten to mention was this one and a half acre snow storage zone that would be a reservoir between the neighborhood. So easily to pick up from Uller on this side and this side from Floridora. That would serve as a park space in the summer and would be used for overflow snow in the winter. And some snow storage, just so you know, we're thinking about it. This will also be refined over time. And I'm sure you were all as surprised as, as I was last week, last Sunday or whenever, and I was like, oh, it's time. My snow blower is out of gas and I can't get to it, but we'll be ready now. So, um, thinking about an overflow space for Public Works as well as just overflow space for the neighborhood as a whole. And as I mentioned, we'll continue to think about snow storage as we move the design forward. A couple of 3D views. This is of concept B, so this is the higher density concept. I think, no, maybe it's A.
So just before you look at this, I call this Candy Land, but it's based on the colors from the site plan. So, so the duplexes are yellow here and they're yellow on her plan. And also these are not buildings that are designed. We have designed floor plans, you know, to, to make sure that things fit, but we have not designed, you know, the full buildings yet. So these are just massing.
Yeah, it's just really to show how the, you know, the different unit types intermix. I think it's a nice way to visualize how we're mixing the ADU type home with the duplexes and the townhomes. And then how much open space there really is and linkage into the river. Here's another view looking north. And a view looking south. Do you want to do this? Oh, click on the text. Wow, Tori, you're fancy. Neration? The roofs will not be flat.
Yeah, no, this is just, you know, just massing.
This was part of the exploration with the architecture team on how to maximize solar on the different roofs. We can play it again too. Oh yeah, this is heading back the other direction. You can see all the little front porches that will be there.
Yeah, and we have townhomes surrounding the park, which we feel kind of embraces the park nicely in the center. But you can see there's a lot of green space here.
And lots of opportunities for snow storage, yes. So anytime you see the, the light blue where it's detached, that's an ADU. You can see that's the view that you'll come in on from Fraction. We'll look all the way down to the river. We'll have units facing Floridora and then placing internal green spaces. So lots of variety. Okay, I can stop. We're almost done. It's 15 seconds. But I see more confusion. I don't think we want that. Thank you, Helen. Okay. Did I miss anything important on the plans?
No, I think that was a good overview of the plan. And so I, oh yeah. I think our recommendation, which is spelled out in the memo, is from a staff perspective, we like concept B. We like the additional density. And we are also recommending a deed restriction light on a handful of single families to help with the budget. I think those are our recommendations. Other than that, we really want to hear from you, your reaction to the plan and layout.
You have to use the microphone.
You know, we were talking about ADUs and the opportunity to have an ADU potentially on every single family and what should we do? ADUs are problematic for this from a planning perspective. And I think that we are doing it because it certainly has been the desire of some of you to explore that. But we shouldn't even be calling them ADUs because what we're proposing is more of a built, you know, a shell of a space that's created because then there's the whole issue of, you know, at what, how much are we paying for? There's the additional cost of building that out. It raises the cost of that unit up and it actually creates a piece of property for us that is harder to recoup cost on than the flexibility that we would have with maybe a more regular, single family type unit. And so, um, you know, I think we've prepared more units. And I can tell you from our perspective that if we weren't wed to ADUs, I think we could deliver a better product here and help pay for it better and find a way to pay for it better. Now, if we, you know, if we come up with a number, if you come up with a number and you're comfortable with light, a light deed restriction and, you know, we're talking about a unit that is going to be significantly drive, you know, that cost is going to be higher. You know, there are people that will all pay for that and that will help pay for some other stuff in there. It, it could be an opportunity there to, on, if that's 10, 10 units we pick or whatever that number is you're comfortable with, that those have ADUs? And if they're built out, then, you know, follow the code, right, mandate how they're used. And that, because that's just another issue, we can't. Anyways, it's, I don't know how, how married you are to that. And if I think if there's some room based on, on unit counts here that we aren't looking at that many ADUs and we move away to something else, that we would be supportive of that, okay?
So if you have a four-bedroom unit, you have a four-bedroom unit and your set, your AMI is set right by that four-bedroom unit. With an ADU, we're paying for a kitchen, we're paying for, you know, an additional bathroom. It's a much more, it's much more expensive than just a single bedroom, right? And so the costs go up and so the subsidy is much bigger when you have an ADU. And the question has been like, are we subsidizing the wrong people? You know, the people who can afford to buy that unit with an ADU? Should we be subsidizing that? So that's just, you know, some of the social type questions we've been asking.
That's all I had. I wanted to plant that seed during, for your conversation.
Okay, so let's start, are, Lori, anything else?
Um, no, we had some questions at the end, I don't know if you want to react to those or if you just want Q and A.
Questions first.
Yeah, perfect.
For the team, anybody?
Maybe since we just ended talking about ADUs, can you remind us of our regular ADU policy?
The most, I'm not the best person to talk to, the most recent policy that we adopted. But I think if, we haven't had one approved, it's my understanding since we adopted that. But if they are adopted, then it's mandates how they use it, right? Julia.
Hi. Yeah, so we allow ADUs. They do have to be occupied by a resident living or working thirty hours a week or more in the Upper Blue. So they do need to be deed restricted.
And they have to be occupied, right?
They do, yes. So there's some additional restrictions in there, there's some size limitations, things like that, but that wouldn't be an issue here.
Lori, could we, or Rick or whoever, with, with the ADUs and the light deed restriction and the AMIs, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, it, it's intriguing to me to maybe do just that. Is, is some of the cottages that we build out ADUs, maybe we sell them at a one forty or whatever that threshold is to get a light deed restriction. And then we maybe don't have to have that, the higher pricing on quite as many single-family homes and still get the subsidy dollars to make it work. I'd love to explore that some because, boy, those single-family homes are in great demand at the lower AMIs. You know, so maybe there's a balance somewhere that we could play with. Because I hear what you're saying about building out the ADUs, you know, and it, you know, so.
You don't ever, I would advise you to never consider selling a light deed restriction at a one forty, one fifty AMI. They have to be closer to two hundred, two twenty. All you're doing, if you,
What's market?
Huh?
Do we know what market is, what the average market rate is?
Two thousand square foot home?
One point eight, two million.
So what is that AMI, what percentage AMI?
We're thinking of only one point one for our deed restriction light, which is a two hun- two twenty, two hundred and twenty percent AMI.
So it's market.
Here's the problem, you take, you sell a, you build a single family, let's say, even if it's seventeen, a cottage, sixteen, seventeen hundred square foot, you sell it at one forty AMI with, as a light deed restriction, so you're selling it for, let's, eight hundred, all right? They, it's got no cap, they've just made three to four hundred thousand dollars. If they turn around, all you're doing is putting money, you're, you're benefiting the wrong person. Because they can sell it then at a rate that's going to be quite a bit more than what they paid for it. So that's why that has to be,
We want to be,
we have to look at, I mean, we have some comparisons, right? And we know in Peak One, the show, where there's some light deed restrictions and there's some recent sales in there and they're over a million. One point what? One point six five, a light deed restriction in Peak One. And we're not proposing that, but it gives you an idea of what that market can look like.
Yeah, no, that's a great point, Rick, something to be very careful of.
I've been beating the drum on the ADUs for a while, just because I think they're incredibly valuable for the homeowner to make it more affordable. And then I certainly love the layer of, you know, it adds rentals in our community. And it also just brings in a di- different demographic to the neighborhood. Is there a way to solve the ADU piece? And, and certainly, I like the mix that you've got on, across, in Plan B, certainly, and on the single families where not every house has an ADU. Is there a way to solve that on the AMI front?
Well, I mean, probably by us looking harder at the number. So we're trying to solve it because we built it into the plan because it's the desire. And, 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 you know, it's not a huge number, it's twenty-two. And can we make it work? Yeah, but it could involve additional subsidy on our part.
The public should, right? Because if you look at like just a straight-up three-bedroom, right? Like we would subsidize a three-bedroom and if we're building studios or one-bedrooms, we're going to subsidize those at a chunk. And, and, you know, like at Justice Center or wherever we've got studios, there was a, there's certainly a subsidy on those AD, on the ADU piece on, on studios. So to me, that three-bedroom with an ADUs, you know, it, it would make sense to have a different subsidy there because you're getting, the community is getting a better, a bigger benefit from it, right? To make the, and I get where you're coming from on the price point, like a three-bedroom at one forty, well, the ADU doesn't really count. And, and you've got the extra cost here of the kitchen, get that completely. Yeah, so to me, the, the equation's just different on what I would look at for the subsidy for single families within ADU, I'd want to subsidize that.
You want to subsidize the, the rental property? I mean, it's basically a, we're providing that buyer with a rental that's going to generate revenue for them. It's hard for us to figure out what's the right amount of subsidy that, that buyer's entitled to or should be entitled to. So I think we could solve it, it's just about figuring out what the right amount of subsidy is and what it does to our numbers.
Yeah, I think there's some spreadsheet work to do there, right? To, because, yeah, you don't want to have them walk into four hundred grand in equity, right? Like, I like where your head was at with that. There, there, there's some spreadsheet jockeying to do there to get it to where it, I think, makes sense from the development side. Again, if I think the, the council thinks that having those ADUs, I mean, I love having that mix in there.
Well, I think that's where the market rate or the deed restriction light could come in because someone who couldn't afford a one point six million dollar house now suddenly can because there's an ADU on it. So it is actually acting as, you know, some sort of subsidy for those folks. But there would have to be some sort of, like, I don't know. If you're like a multimillionaire, maybe you don't qualify for those units, I don't know.
I just, I just wanted to point out on the planning side of things, you can see that the lot depth for a four-bedroom home with attached garage versus the lot depth for the, the home with the detached ADU is the same. So there is a lot of flexibility and same for this duplex lot. There's a lot of flexibility that's built in with this grid that allows us to plug in different unit types over time as this is figured out and we figure out what the demand is or the, the, what's, how many people would be wanting, you know, be interested in buying that and, and managing having a renter. And so, you know, is it, but just, you can see the lot depth on these cottages that don't have the ADUs is a much smaller depth. So it's really these larger lot footprints that allow for more unit types to be plugged in or changed out.
Yeah, I think if the ADUs are important to the council, we can, you know, figure it out and see what it's going to do to the budget and to our subsidy amount. And, and our whole goal is to be able to come back to you all in a month or six weeks or two months. Okay, now we understand the civil costs, now we understand more. So here's really where our AMIs need to be for this kind of subsidy. If we want to subsidize more, we can reduce the prices. So our goal is to figure out what you want and then we'll come back to you a couple of months after we figure it out.
And if we are mandating the use of that unit, then we should be paying a price for that, right?
Yeah.
And, and that's, I think, that was some of the rub we saw, but if, if we're not, but you're right, because we're bas- and not everybody would probably even want that. Not everybody wants to be a renter.
Yeah.
And, or landlord, I mean.
Yeah.
And so, but if you want, if you're willing to be a landlord, then maybe you get a little more with it on our subsidies. So we need to look at it from that perspective, I think. And so if, if you still think that's something you would like to see, a mix of those in there, then that's the direction we'll go.
To piggyback on that real quick, one of the things that's interesting, right, is those twenty-two ADUs actually add basically another unit per acre. So, you know, I think, you know, the council in the past has been, I think we're all sensitive to not having kind of over-programming all the land. And five point five seems a little light to me, five-eight seems a little light. And adding those ADUs, I think, adds that kind of units per acre, but not in a giant massing.
And we're still under what the greater master plan that was approved for could handle? Yeah, so we're still under that.
If that's the general objection in the council, that helps with at least one of our questions. Because one of the questions, are you comfortable with our ADU proposal? But if the bulk of the council is like, keep them in the program and figure it out.
What would be helpful to inform our decision is understanding what is that subsidy? Could those ADU units and could that mean an extra townhome? Like, as you said, that philosophy, that question, who are we subsidizing? And do we want to subsidize an ADU for the rental income for that person at the higher price point? Or do we want to add another two-bedroom townhome? So I don't think I can make that decision right now, I'd like to understand that. And I'm not married to the ADUs at all. I think we brought on a lot of rental units into this community and of eliminating the ADUs makes the neighborhood flow a little better. Really targets that, as Lori, I know you mentioned before, that first-time home buyer. Like, that's where I'd like to put more of our energy and dollars into.
Yeah, is there consensus with council whether we keep ADUs on the table or maybe eliminate them and see what our numbers look like? Or come back with two sort of, set the numbers if we keep ADUs?
I mean, that's going to cost a lot, what we're going to do next. The next step, just so you know, is that we would take, you know, whichever concept you liked or, you know, you want a few modifications, then we would take it to our civil engineering company and they will do all those plans that Lori was talking about, the utility plans, the grading plans, you know, all, all of that. So that then we can bid the infrastructure, which is the biggest part of the town subsidy, in my estimation right now. So that is sort of a goal for me, is to push that piece forward. But obviously, we need a good plan heading that before we really spend the money on. We're basically getting our civil engineering drawings ninety percent done to get that bid, so.
Agree with Carol, but almost for another reason, in the fact that I don't know if I'm comfortable with mandating usage of ADU for the homeowner. And I, I enjoyed reading about how, you know, there is that opportunity to use as an officer a fifth bedroom or rent it out. But I also see, for, you know, your explanation, why that's problematic. But I don't, I don't know if, it doesn't sit well with me of having mandates on, on those properties for those owners that you buy one of those because that's what you got and you have to rent it. Up the ADU, that may not be for everyone. And I think that's something that would cause a lot of staff's time, monitoring, as well as just kind of a heavy-handed approach when it comes to those workforce units.
I feel the opposite of that. I, I do think they should be mandated, I mean, if we're building them, I think they should be mandated. And plus, I don't like the thought of having a different ADU, you know, management in one of our neighborhoods than across Summit County. And so I feel like just having that same, if you have an ADU, it's got to be filled, that just makes sense to me. But I guess I really feel like we had so much feedback from the stable slots that people could not believe that we couldn't make housing more affordable than eight hundred thousand dollars. And I don't know how the loan works because I've heard that you can't use the rental to get the loan. And so I'm not sure if this really helps people who couldn't actually afford a how, a single-family home. But it feels to me, I mean, I guess the reason I was really keen on this is it, I've seen it and experienced that you can have a, a more expensive house than you could afford to pay the mortgage on your own. And so I guess I'm a little bit struggling, like, I feel like this is a good solution, but it feels like the team does not think this is a good solution. And then so I'm trying to understand if I'm missing something or if it's just complicated. It's obviously complicated. But I guess I feel like ADUs are a big benefit to the homeowner and not necess- and, you know, especially for those folks who can only afford a six hundred thousand dollar house. And then if we sold it for seven hundred thousand, then they'd have mortgage help. But am I wrong with thinking that that works?
This, it, it is complicated because I think this is really the first time in a deed-restricted neighborhood we've sort of planned for ADUs and we're trying to figure out the policies around it. And the mandating the use of the ADU is always something that we worry about. Because, yeah, the first person that buys this has the ADU, then they sell it and that person has a larger family and wants to use that ADU for their kid. Or, you know, you just don't know what the circumstances might be down the road. So it's really just trying to figure out what's the best policies to manage these things and be fair and then the cost of location. So, I mean, we're happy to, to continue to keep the ADUs on, on the table. Because I think, at least we're hearing some council really think they're important. I mean, we do, you know, people could rent rooms easily and it's so much simpler than it being an ADU. I mean, you could, you know, if you have family and you're just sharing the cost of this house and you have roommates in your townhome or in your duplex, that's not complicated. It's the ADU that becomes complicated because of the mandating the use. In my mind.
Also a base, whoa, baseline issue just with how AMI is calculated and it's only on bedrooms. It has nothing to do with square footage, it has nothing to do with the number of windows you put in, it has nothing to do with how many kitchens you have or how many bathrooms you have. A four-bedroom is a four-bedroom, whether it's detached with a separate kitchen and a separate bath or not. And so that's the big cost increase that's not accounted for with an AMI. And so AMI is also one of the challenges with.
But we're setting the AMI, we can set it at whatever we want.
It's still by bed, number of bedrooms and not square footage or kitchens or, it costs more, yeah.
ADU that is really a four-bedroom unit than a regular four-bedroom unit is the issue.
One thing, to your point, Kelly, of like, we all heard that from the stables, how expensive those units are. And I'm wondering, I mean, I think the duplex is a great solution. Look at this grid, the square footage is the same, you're just attached to another home. And I know we have many duplexes within our community, some of them older build, they're not that great, you hear all your neighbors. So maybe that's something you could speak to, Suzanne, the, and then also what that would do to our subsidy if we increased the number of duplexes? Because Kelly, I think that's a solution, like, you don't have, you have a neighbor attached to you, but I think you can do it in a really great way where it feels like a single-family home. The price point for our community members are significantly lower. So I'd like to hear a little bit about that.
So just so we're clear, I know everyone was complaining about the hundred and forty percent AMI units, single families out at stables. We only have five of those units, we have a lot of, we have eighteen townhomes and those are starting in the three hundreds. So I think we don't hear, we only hear the negatives, we don't hear the positives. And we have so many great,
Just to add to that, the number of people that pulled out of stable because all they wanted was that eight hundred thousand dollar single family.
Yeah, there were a lot.
And because they couldn't get it, they did, that's all they wanted, so they pulled out.
But it's not like our townhomes aren't selling either.
No, I know, but I mean, there's a strong,
There's a line out.
There is a need. There is a need across the board, and there's a great need for that first-time homebuyer that you talked about. But there's a strong need also for, uh we know that people will line up with that, even that seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollar. Doesn't mean we, you know, we don't deliver, but the difference in what we're building to what they were buying and getting in Wellington is night and day. So I mean, I think we're really happy with the the vertical construction cost of these and say, how could you do it cheaper? And could we do it cheaper? Yeah, we could build a Wellington home.
But what we're not saying is doing cheaper, just offering the same quality product in duplex form instead of.
And it's a, and that's a great option, is a great option too.
Yeah, and off, I mean, generally, a duplex and a single family are pretty much the same price per square foot to build, just because you have the firewall. Yes, you don't have quite as much sighting, but there are some other complications and expenses related to that um that wall. Um, so I generally, like, at stables, just so you know, the townhomes, we lose money like crazy on them. Uh, because of the AMI, right, and that's what you guys have subsidized. Um, the single family are slightly making money, and then the duplexes are kind of like a break even. So if you want to look at it that way, that's sort of like, you know, what you're subsidizing are those lower AMIs.
Carol, were you suggesting earlier, like, instead of doing the ADUs, if if the subsidy for an ADU is similar to the subsidy for, say, a two-bedroom townhome? To just do the two-bedroom townhome for sale units instead?
I think that'd be just a good data point to help.
Yeah, yeah, I think I totally agree with, yeah, seeing those numbers would be valuable, for sure.
I think what's really interesting too is is we're kind of going about this a little bit different than stables and other traditional projects. In the sense that we would look at this to do uh horizontal infrastructure only. So we'd kind of massage the unit counts, the ADU conversations, things like that. As as we go on, knowing that um if we did infrastructure this upcoming summer, it would just be focusing on the roads. That wouldn't necessarily say that we couldn't put a cottage where duplexes and vice versa. Um, of course, we'd have to pay attention to those easements, but that's where we're trying to allow a little bit more time to have these big overarching conversations. Um, as we do the due diligence to get the infrastructure right.
When it comes to the uh multifamily dwellings, um you know, we just had an amazing presentation on firewise and. And talked to Captain Bennett, talked about the uh insurance costs uh for, you know, property insurance. From my understanding, anything more than a triplex, um the cost burden for property insurance skyrockets. And so I'm just curious, the motivation of having um, you know, six, six uh townhome units and and five. In here when that cost burden will go on to our workforce.
Even the triplexes, so we had a big problem with that out at stables. Um, of course, we wanted our triplexes to have the lowest HOA dues on on that alley there. And um because of the cost of insurance uh and 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 fire, you know, insurance. Um, they, their dues were turning out to be more than single-family or duplex units dues. And so we had to really shop it, it was incredibly difficult, so even on triplexes, that is an issue.
So I guess my question be, is if that, if that threat is not going away. And it's not mitigated, then does, should that be a factor in our product mix of units?
Well, I think it depends on what, who you want to serve, so if you want to serve some of the lower AMIs and and people who are entering in at a hundred percent AMI. I mean, they're probably not getting a cottage, they're not qualifying for that or a single family. Um, so I think, I think that's, you know, something you guys have to have to weigh and and decide really.
If, I guess, maybe I'm not appreciating what the, what the cost is on this. And if you're, if we're trying to get our entry-level workforce, a whole, you know, a dwelling, a residence. Are we then doing like a bait and switch and then burdening them with a huge monthly payment? Of an HOA or property insurance that then they are un- unprepared for perhaps?
I can't exactly speak to their property insurance, just because that's kind of their side of it, and we haven't had any triplex move-ins yet, unfortunately. Um, so I think that'll be good information as those, as those folks start to move in um over the next couple of months. But I will say those HOA dues were were higher. But as we look across the board and a lot of the conversations we've been having about um high HOA dues. They're not falling in in where we would see that as dramatically high, and what I mean by that is they're under four hundred. Um, includes plowing, all that good stuff, and I think one mechanism we need to look at here a little bit with HOAs. Is that when we look at your overall cost to live in this neighborhood, we're eliminating that utility bill. So while that's not necessarily what's talked about here, is when you look at your overall, your mortgage utilities and then your HOA. If the you, if we're able to get the HOAs in the four hundreds, and then we're looking at zero to fifty in in the utility bills. That's where a lot of these other older complexes are really hurting, because you're hurting on both ends. Um, so I I do feel like our our net zero approach is really able to kind of help, it can't solve it, but it definitely helps mitigate it. Um, and I think that just coming from a lot of the materials we've used, um I know it's a big thing that Thrive talks about. And that's something that material list that we can supply and and will supply to those triplexes that will help them be able to talk to red, white, and blue. And and things like that to show, hey, you know, we have these type of firewalls, we have just a beefed-up exterior building. Um, that would, would and should help kind of take that down from a fire perspective.
Yeah, we did get those lowered by about two hundred dollars a unit per month. Um, by shopping it and giving them more information about some of the materials we had used and systems we had used.
Again, not to prolong this comment to be too long, but um I think when you hear about thousand percent increases on premiums. And it's due to having multiple shared walls, and that is a concern of the company. It, I guess there is just a question, maybe we should be bringing someone in from that have that knowledge. To say, yes, that thousand percent increase will continue year in, year in, year out, or. I'm adjustment, and this is what we're looking at, because I think the last thing anyone on in this room wants to do is burden our workforce. With a, you know, untenable uh expense that we maybe should have foreseen but didn't.
What I think I hear you saying, and hopefully this is okay, is if you were, you know, lowering the AMI on like a duplex. That wasn't subject to those same HOA dues, what would the subsidy be on the duplex compared to the subsidy that you're putting on the townhome? Just so you can understand that, um, you know, why is that the lower AMI going on the townhome and it's a subsidy number? Uh, but if you had that number, that could help you to kind of fill the gap in, you know, how the decision's being made on the unit mix.
I think it's to make sure they're actually paying less every month.
Okay.
Well, that's what I, I mean, my, the light went off in my head as you were talking about that and thinking from that perspective. When, you know, originally, when we were doing this last development, it was going to be single-family duplex, right? We had built uh multifamily, we built Blue Fifty-Two, which is part of this bigger development. And this was kind of our last Wellington neighborhood that we had an opportunity to do. And then we looked at how we could, you know, have a greater mix and a little more diverse type of things, but you. There could be a way to look at this as, you know, you do some smaller duplexes, even the twelve hundred, fourteen, twelve hundred square foot. Duplexes or something, fourteen, whatever that is, and a more series of those. Because Suzanne said you lose money on the townhomes anyways, and so, because you're sub, but you could probably. You probably might charge a little more, but you could subsidize, put some of that subsidy in there and maybe still meet those same people. That you were trying to target, and you wouldn't have, and then you don't even have to mess with the HOA issue the same.
I know that's. I don't know if we're in a position to get any data to help us inform this decision, because I I think we're starting to guess what people want. And I don't know if in the process of selling stables, that we can generate some data as to what are the highest demand units that you're seeing? And what are the ones that, you know, like Rick said, I came in for the eight hundred thousand dollar single family, and if I can't get that amount. You know, which which um, you know, I'm I'm curious if we can have some data to help us, because I. Our our workforce housing needs have changed a lot, you know, I mean, Rick's right, we talked about this being another Wellington. But that was before COVID, that was back in the, the, you know, twenty seventeen, eighteen. And it was, you know, our workforce housing needs are going to change over time, so we have to be careful. I I don't want to overplan this, I I'm going to make a push later to really phase this. With a last phase with very little. Commitment till we get to the point of doing it in terms of what do we need? You know, this is our last land, and um I I think it's very important that we, we don't try to. The first phase, yeah, we've got it, we've got to get it right, the first phase. But the 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 future phases after that, particularly the last one. It it it, we we really should not overplan it, in my opinion.
Alright, so we have to decide, what they really need to know is, I mean, I guess the unit mix, it sounds like it's a little bit back on the. Up in the air, but.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, Kelly, just to interject, I I think we do need to make a decision on that, because the infrastructure.
Yeah.
And the engineering needs to get done, so.
Exactly, so what we need to provide some input on today is if we're, if we really are married to the ADUs. Because that really changes the layout and and the needs of the project. And then also, the more information on the unit mix that we can give them, the better. Does anyone want to start? Carol, do you want it?
Um, I'm not married to the ADUs, that's what we're after. Um, I think whatever allows a design team to provide. The, I mean, the makeup, give the subsidy to the folks that need it. It sounds very messy, where I hear Jay from requiring occupancy. But how would we ever, like, if someone on the open market built an ADU, we'd require occupancy, it needs to be consistent with our rules. So a lot of aspects of the ADU are messy for me, including the dollars we're putting in there, so um. The only reason I'd support them if they're in some sort of makeup with those deed restriction light units. That allows us to subsidize other units, but otherwise, um I'll give you all some flexibility, I'm.
And it sounds like you're okay with the deed restricted light units.
Subsidize some of our other units.
Can I ask that you also weigh in on the street layout in general, um design of how we're looking at the roads as well? Because that's also really important on our infrastructure calc.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic, the more organic look versus the um, the grid format for traffic calming.
Yeah.
The flow of the neighborhood, the open space, maximizing the easement, so I think that's all great. The other point that I'll make with our higher-end units, the single-family deed light or the higher AMIs. I think that's a product that we can capture through buy downs and housing helps to a degree. Um, so that's also why I'd like to see more duplexes potentially.
One second next.
I'll jump in, um, just ripping through the questions, um, yeah, I like the street layout. Um, as shown actually in both concepts A and B, those are great. I think I'd like to see a couple more bus stops to the south, it seemed like um the one bus stop on the north. Maybe helps newer neighborhood a little bit, but it's also like right next to the the park and the snow storage, so. Yeah, just maybe some spreading that out to make it closer to the majority of the housing, um, just an opportunity there. Um, number two, um. I'm also not married to the ADUs, um, I think I'd like to see them, I think that, I like that rental piece, I think it makes the places more affordable. Um, I like having a, I I think the five point five and the five point eight units per acre is a little light. Um, so I'd like to see that a little higher, so whether it's ADUs or townhomes, whatever the team thinks is is best. I'd love to see that one sixty, one seventy number for that zone uh accomplished one way or the other. Um, yeah, love the deed restriction light, I think that's a really thoughtful way to um help meet your goals. And then, yeah, comfortable so far with sizes, prices, I I I love the mix, I think. Um, yeah, there's, there's kind of something that that should work for everybody in a nice little chunk of all those, so. Um, if that ends up being more duplexes, that's great, just, yeah, would love to see one sixty units, would be good. Thanks.
Lean, I, this has been a great discussion, I I um, I'm not ready to make really hard decisions. But I can give input to help you guys to your next step, I generally like the layout. I um generally lean towards Plan B, the more units. I really wanted to see some data, and if my suspicions are correct, that it's very price-driven. Um, we might want to explore some of the twelve hundred square foot and, you know, that. I want to be very careful of the deed restriction light, I don't want to sell a unit and see somebody flip it and. And and we lose the affordability piece, even the one forty, which arguably is not affordable, but it's way below market. I I I would rather see us if we feel like we need to to have a mix in a handful of. Higher price to to help us with the subsidy, it's just to a two or three market rate. And and not mess with the light deed restriction, I, I'm really scared of that, Rick, you brought a great point. Um, the late deed restriction, we've seen it happen too too many times, I'd like to say. And as we evolved and learned about all our deed restrictions, where people had flipped things and we've lost, lost affordability. And they made a bunch of money, and it's a lose-lose for the community, it's a win for the buyer, so I want to be very careful of that. Um, I I'm still having trouble with the elephant room, the parking. Um, the last phase, I really think we need to separate the vote between parking on McCain. And doing this project, or I can't support it. Um, I I fundamentally believe parking on McCain is wrong, and I can't support it. And if that's a must to to support this project, that's a shame. I think we should phase this project in a way where the last phase and the phase to the north. Because there's time to have all the unanswered questions that exist about parking on McCain. And that we keep that parking there as we charge forward and build the rest of this, because there's a need here. And we, this is a great project, and I love the layout, but we haven't even looked at what it looks like with three hundred fifty cars on it. We need to look at that, and that should be the last phase, and hopefully in five years or whenever that phase comes about. That parking may not be needed, we're still in discussions, there's a lot of ifs, there's a lot of maybes. There's, there's a lot of pieces to this that uh we don't know the answers to. We've got the school district, we've got the ski area, there's negotiations all over the place, and too many unanswered questions. For me to support both connected, so I really hope that this council will support a phasing plan. Where we leave that last phase to the north open and the parking question open.
Yeah.
I do need to the south, thank you.
Okay.
Um, I appreciate all the work that came up, and I'm so glad that we have such great partners here at the table to to brainstorm these ideas. And I think we're very, very fortunate here at the town to have amazing people. Um, I'm, I lean a lot more in Dick's camp than uh anywhere other than the. I'll be the lone person to say that I think the density is a little too dense. I think that I would love to see uh the opposite of closer to that four UPA versus uh the five and a half or six where we're at. But again, I'm I'm, and that just, I think I had sticker shock from a fifty percent jump in number of units. As well as the cost financially, and uh I think that 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 needs to be part of it, that there is. This does have to be funded, even if it is over five years, and we went through that large process of trying to find funds to get us. Through that five-year CIP and uh budget and, and so I just want to make sure we're conscious that it isn't a bottomless well. Um, I would love to see the south fifty percent of this plan just be grayed out as a to-be-determined. Um, I I don't want to, you know, I think having. I, I don't want to, you know, I think having. An idea and maybe this is it is fine, but I, I really don't want to have that discussion at the moment. I think there's so many questions to be answered with the geothermal, with solar, with. Product mix and the, the future that, I think, doing a two-part phase where. You know, maybe we have a rough sketch of what the, the, the south looks like, but in no way committed to it and. And in no way shifting the infrastructure of what's happening right now for it, I think would be a prudent way forward. This is our last, was, we keep saying, and that. Taking our time, doing due diligence and not rushing into it, even if it does cost extra in the long term, knowing the, the. Scalability of it and knowing that there is a cost to doing a smaller project at first and then doing the second. I am very concerned about the proximity to Upper Blue and the fact that we are building. Planning on building right up to their property line, there is, you know, the Summit School District is part of our community, I know it's not the town. But we, I do believe it'd be nice to have the flexibility. To, to support them if there are certain. Things that need to happen with between Upper Blue and Breckell and whatever that looks like. I would love to have the, the flexibility and not to be drawing that hard line of building right up to their, to their property. I know that looking at the lugs for Land Use District Thirty One, aesthetics along the river is very, very important, so I know that. Suzanne, you'll make sure that we adhere to the quality architectural design and site planning for that. Another thing that concerns me with the multi-family dwellings is the, is the material management and where that lives and how that goes. I think I personally would prefer to see duplexes and single families only and to eliminate the, the townhouses. And I'm not married to the ADUs, I think if that mix of. Duplexes and single families gets us to where we need to be in different sized duplexes, then I'd be supportive of that. And just like I said, I'm not ready to vote on this, the project in its entirety, I would really like to see it broken up into chunks.
Okay, I'm not married to the ADUs, I really, the reason I was, I'm excited about ADUs is because. I really believe many of our long-term residents want their own home, and so I think that. Having an ADU is a way to make that more affordable and also to have a higher density. But I think you guys have done a good, really good job of, you know, kind of a unit mix. I would tend towards more single-family homes. If, you know, if it is discovered that we could get rid of some of the. Fiveplexes or sixplexes and go down to more duplexes, I do think that there's just, there's a lot of demand for that. And I guess in my mind, I always imagined that because this is a big plot of land and our last opportunity to really. Have single-family homes and duplexes, that's what I always imagined having here. I think there are some infill lots around town where we can, you know, put some higher density housing. But I, like I said, I think you guys did a great job to really get creative with the space, I think the layout is terrific. Especially love the consideration of tabletops, I know that's not our favorite thing, but. We've heard it from the community a lot that they appreciate that. Speaking of, I don't like where that bus stop is, like. There's a bus stop that's right in the middle of all the homes when it could just be pushed a little bit closer to Fraction Road and be sort of at the park. It's just so undesirable to have a bus stop right in your front yard, that I think if we have an opportunity to locate it someplace not in someone's front yard. That would be a major benefit. I really, I was gonna say I support the deed restriction light, but. Totally understand everyone's concern about who, you know, if that really helps or not. I would definitely consider if we needed to have a few market. I mean, I, I think I'd prefer a deed restriction light if we could figure out a really good way to make that work. I'm not sure what that is. I do support phasing for, really the only reason I support that is because. I think that, well, I guess I should say, not necessarily phasing, I support slowing this down so that we can figure out the utility situation. I really think we should be looking holistically at the town of Breckenridge for. Geothermal and how to save our community members money, and I think that over the long term. That geothermal has a lot of potential, and so I'm comfortable with looking at. You know, slowing it down in order to make those right decisions. And then same with Dick as I thought his point about really figuring out from our data that we have what people want. Do people, of course, some people do want the fiveplexes, but should we be doing more duplexes or single fam, family homes on this? I would really be interested in knowing what the community says about that. Any final questions from you? I, I don't think that was as clear as you hoped to get, but.
This is, it's very helpful, actually, I think we will get our group together, figure out. How we can address those comments, look at some of the data. I think we're still able to move forward with some pricing on civil, so. I mean, we want to come back to you with some, some numbers that show, okay, if we eliminate. The townhomes and go with more duplexes, this is what it does to the whole project budget. And, and you'll know, and then kind of up to you guys. And we're super excited about geothermal too.
Just to give you an update on where we're at with that, I mean Shannon, you know, put together a. An internal subcommittee of town staff to really take a hard look at this and I think. Based off of, you know, what, the motivation that you got when you were in Jackson and. And we had an hour and a half meeting today with that, that group that was there and it is, I could see why. You got excited, I mean, they are extremely knowledgeable and what they are doing, I mean, at Mesa University in Grand Junction is. Unbelievable and, and the systems that they propose are. Very exciting to understand and learn more about it, so what, you know, we're gonna do is, you know, and we've also, we're having a meeting with the town of Vail. That's been arranged because they're working directly with that company for next week, so we're gonna be meeting. And looking at potentially a proposal that we would bring back to engage them for a level one. Kind of a phase one early evaluation of looking at. The potential of something around here, because it really becomes more of a district, right? We're not just talking about this, we're talking about then, what else can we do? Because this location allows us to tie in to the rec center, which is a big facility, we're across the street from our public works yard, which allows. Other great opportunities and then also obviously the one here in the core of town, which could provide.
Do you even need snow storage if you have geothermal?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, and so we need, and then if we have an early evaluation, there, you know, there's. Could we be lining up for some potential pre-designed development grant funding for that that. By, which is actually due by the end of this year for current phase, and so we're trying to really get our ducks in a row quickly. To put ourselves in a position to look more at this and, and not because. We're in a hurry, we're not, you know, it's only because really that timeline of some of the, the design grant money that we want to be able to access, so.
Well, thank you guys for staying flexible.
There is mud, right?
Yeah. Taking all this input.
It's good.
So what are we doing now?
Can we just take two-minute break, really quick? Two and a half minutes break. Run.
Started. We have a lot to do, not very much time to do it in.
Jay ran out of snacks.
Really burned that quickly.
Alright, I was hoping Dick wasn't gonna return.
Still here.
I know, I know. So, thank you. This next section obviously is to revisit the, what I refer to as the overflow skier parking that we are required to provide. So, in July, we last looked at a proposal that we had where it would be located on the McCain property, but it for, it was really more in this kind of the southeast corner of that property. And there were concerns raised at that time, certainly some from Breck history about what that would do because we would have lost those rock piles that were there of historic nature. It's a little more of a visible location in that area right there on some of that. And so, you know, hearing that, I thought, well, let us look at this a little more and see what other possibilities. Plus, I was really driven to the fact that I think we need to provide a smaller footprint. I mean, I hear that, you know, we know what the data is showing us on the usage and that the number of times that they're actually parking 500 with like a dozen times over the course. And so, why are we doing that when we could meet 95% of the time, we could meet that with a lower number like 350? And, uh, and so I think that's, you know, what I feel like we should be pushing for in order to do that, knowing that we, that the ski areas in negotiations with CMC to utilize a couple hundred spaces on those limited days when we did label it 350. With that being said, you know, we had developed that area that you now see on the map, Shannon Smith did as part of the snow storage. That's part of the, you know, where it was designed in the 2021 adopted master plan for that area. And when you look at it, it's like, alright, well, it's 99% done for parking if that's where you want to put it. It's in that kind of bell area of the curve. It puts it a little farther to the north. It doesn't even have to touch the rocks. It's better concealed because of some of the tree buffers, I think, that are in there. While some people have certainly expressed concerns about vehicles that would exit to the north and enter the roundabout at Fairview. Uh, I, you know, after our internal discussions and, and we feel that it will help address the roundabout issues on Fairview. Because one of the biggest problems with Fairview is that there is very little side traffic coming into that roundabout. And it's all north-south and it becomes, you know, a racetrack because there's nothing to slow those vehicles from any side traffic entering. And that's how roundabouts function better. When you have a blend of traffic coming in from all angles in there, causes everybody to slow and creates a calming effect in there. And so, having some of those vehicles, certainly on a limited basis, entering in there, those same vehicles are gonna go into that roundabout. It's just, I mean, they're currently in it now. It's just where they enter it would be different. And, and I think that could be beneficial to address some of the, certainly some of the concerns that we heard from the neighborhood across from that. So, with that, you have the proposal, a revised proposal in front of you. Yeah, so we're really just here to kind of see if that, if you think that that's an improvement. I mean, at, at the last one, certainly the majority of the council at that time felt that they wanted to continue to explore moving the parking to McCain. And so, we need, you know, we're here to say, do you still feel that the majority of you, I emphasize majority, of you feel that we should be moving it to McCain and not programming it on to Block 11? And if you like this revised location better. And also, in addition to that, it does allow us, at this location allows for some flexibility on those key, like that key snow sculpture weekend when we're gonna park a thousand cars, that we could easily move some of them across the road into that additional snow storage area, this program there. Because there would be room on that site in January for that to happen. That's one weekend out of the year.
Can you also discuss a little bit, I know that we've discussed just at a high level, you know, some of the issues that were raised by the HOA and others in that neighborhood, like restrooms, summer use, maybe timeline. Can you talk about at least those three things and anything else that you might?
Well, there would be a rest, there would be portages put out there. The ski area does that. We require that now because we have that issue on Block 11 and we require that there. We're not proposing lights. So, while some said there'd be light pollution, there wouldn't be lights out there at that particular. I mean, summer usage is a policy question. But it's all, you know, I mean, it's a policy question on, do you want, there's two issues on summer use. Number one is, do we allow for, you know, short-term vehicle, you know, RV types up to two weeks, which has been very beneficial for many of our guests that come here that have that and they have no place to park that vehicle while they may be staying at, you know, an STR or with other family or their friends. And it's, it's an amenity that, you know, we started look, that we developed over 20 years ago and people love it. You know, we have a little bit of issue with people camping out there, but we, you know, we're pretty proactive on making sure that, you know, we don't allow camping on those sites. But, and then the other issue is, you know, some construction staging that occurs. That site that we're proposing the parking has been, has been used this whole summer for construction staging. So, I mean, you, you could barely see it unless you were really looking because of the trees, but all of the work that was done, being done out there, where they were staging, staging, and I think they're still, unless they just moved up like a week ago, they were still staging some things out on that site. So, staff will tell you that staging is probably a higher need and priority than RV parking. RV parking isn't gonna impact us. It's gonna impact our guests that come here that are really looking for, for that amenity that we have offered for the past 20 years to them. So, but it could, it could be done there, that's for sure. I think it could be managed and it wouldn't be, but.
Rick, would you take us a minute and just explain, provide a history of the McCain purchase and specifically the use of open space funds? And what limitations that puts on any of McCain or just the western portion or the whole portion?
Uh, I'll ask Scott to talk about. Well, I, cause I honestly, I can't remember what, what, you know, there was a percentage of that that we purchased and we're still, that percentage of open space is still there.
So, forgive me for not knowing the acreages on this, other than the, the open space. So, the previous council essentially wanted to preserve a portion of the property as open space and wanted to make sure that the open space program actually purchased the land from the town as a whole to continue as open space. It's approximately 15 acres based on the, the location of the road. That was the piece that we didn't really understand. Originally, originally, the open space purchase for the McCain parcel was a third. It was 30, it was 30% or 33%, depending on which one you're looking at. But it's essentially a third of it was purchased with open space dollars. And the vast majority, the point of that was to maintain the river corridor and on the west side of the river, because that is the primary ungulate habitat and travel corridor, which connects to Four Mile Bridge. So, when that, yeah, so, and I, so, I can't, sorry, we can't reject this at this point. But, but the idea of the river corridor as a whole, particularly on the west side, that was the initial purchase of the McCain property. That was the goal, was to make sure that that corridor was preserved for open, for open space and primarily for wildlife habitat and travel corridor. More recently, the previous open, previous council requested that 15 acres be purchased along the southern portion of it. And that did come to pass. And it was basically set at the same rate that was originally, the original purchase price was as well. So, I would say it's a pretty, pretty bargain sale from two, you know, essentially paying 2,000, 2,000 era per acre costs for the open space. But the idea was that that 15 acre parcel, which extended the river corridor to the east, a little bit more to the road, the new road alignment, that was acquired. It was paid, there was money transferred from the open space fund into kind of the general fund to pay for that parcel. And that, essentially, that parcel is, is removed from development. That was the intent, was to preserve the portion, again, west of the current new road all the way to the western side of the river. And so, that port, that action has occurred. The one exception is that the location of the road was not fully known until this year. And so, where exactly that boundary is, was, was defined by wherever the road ended up. So, that's, that's the portion that was preserved by the prior council from an open space standpoint.
Thank you for that history. Then, um, in the report, it, it's, I think it states, uh, true, that this will be true overflow, therefore, no shuttle will be running till the nor, I think this is my writing, but north and south Gondola lots are full. Is that correct? Is that accurate from?
That's the goal.
So, that's the goal. That is not the?
It's not the current agreement or operational plan that is currently in existence. But, you know, Shannon can speak more to this. I mean, her most recent meeting with the ski area was, you know, making sure they knew of what we're presenting here in that conversation. And also, that certainly that's what the town wants to continue to push for, is that this becomes more, I mean, we already know that the majority of the time, every weekend, it would be needed, right? Because we generally fill the lots on every weekend. But it's the Monday through Thursday that I'm like, why are we running shuttles? Why are we, when we're parking 150 cars out there and we've got 300 empty spaces in the Gondola lot, you know? And so, they hear that, but they aren't ready to say, we're not gonna have a free option. You know, they're not ready to say that today. But they are looking at that from a broader perspective across all of their resorts as to what that looks like. And they're also looking at how they can explore some flexible pricing, carpooling and more some flex, potentially flexible pricing mid-week to drive more of those people and see if they could continue to drive more of those people to the Gondola lots and have even less parking during the week out there. So.
That's accurate.
Um, and then lastly, I guess, is there a reason why if Block 11's saying get phased from north to south, is there a reason we can't just kick the can down the road on this for a year, two years, three years, five years?
Well, you could, if, depending on that to some extent. The, the challenge is that the more that you, the more you are parking cars and doing things, one of the big reasons that we need to do an extensive soil, we're doing a very extensive soils test in our civil part is because we've had snow storage and vehicles being parked out there for a long time. And, you know, so it, cars leak oil, right? We know the debris that comes with snow storage and that. And what does that, how, how much do we have to over excavate that land and disturb it? And then we put new soil down there. And so, we would like to try to, to, to preserve that. At some point, we're gonna, we're gonna test this and think this X and we want to preserve that, you know? Otherwise, we gotta go back in five years and retest it because we've continued to do other things on it and have, you know, construction storage and vehicles being parked and whatever else happens on that. So, it's been happening on that lot for the last 20-plus years and we're gonna continue to do that. And then, you know, are we damaging the soil some more? So, that, I, I can tell you in talking to Melanie, her, she wants to get a point where, you know, we're, we've kind of moved that on and we can start to protect that area a little more. That's the desire. It doesn't mean that the, all the council says, you know, we want to slow down and continue to park cars for five more years. Yeah. They'll do it.
What is the timeline right now? Would we start parking cars there this winter or it would be next?
Well, uh, under our current timeline, we were gonna park, we were gonna park car, this would have been the last winter we parked cars there. Because we were gonna go in potentially and start grading and excavate, doing some grading excavation in the summer of '25. So, that would have, that would have taken that option away.
Do we, do we know from our studies on McCain, how many acres 350 cars take to park?
Well, we, uh, we know generally the size of, so on the diagram, they have programmed that for 350 cars.
So, it's not very big.
Uh, three and a half.
Yeah, it's usually about a hundred acre, uh, an acre for 100 cars.
There, and they're sticking it in a little tighter than that here, but it's probably, it, it's gonna be 2.7 to 3 acres in there.
So, 3 acres is?
Yeah.
If we're successful in these negotiations, we're only talking 3 acres. Okay. I, are we ready for comments here? I, it, I just don't think now's the time for this vote. We've, we've got discussions with the ski area. We've got discussions between the ski area and CMC. We've got discussions with the school district, none of which we can really get into detail in this meeting to debate this question. We haven't even looked at what 3 acres on Block 11 carved out and landscaped around does to this plan. I, 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 I think we just need to take a little more time. Let some of these discussions go to fruition. I also think in fairness, um, we, we really need to look at what it looks like keeping it where it is in a smaller format. Right now, we're just thinking about 1,000, 1,500 cars, you know? But if we could keep it to 3 acres and CMC discussions come through with the ski area, that could become overflow. And, um, that could potentially work. I, we don't know. We haven't looked at it. So, I also think we, all of our focus is to the east on the impacts of McCain. We're forgetting about those, those, those 30 acres when you look at the river corridor and the 15 acres of open space that we have, that we have been so excited about for the last five years in terms of what that is for our workforce housing, what that is for our community to be able to utilize that gorgeous part of our, of our valley for open space. The impacts that this kind of thing has from the west hasn't even been discussed and we very much need to think about that. I, 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 I also, we've talked a lot about not wanting sprawl from Gold Hill to south of Breckenridge. And this is just the next step to it. So, I, I've got a lot of concerns, as you well know, Rick. You and I have talked about it. It's, uh, but I just, this is not the time. We don't have to make this decision tonight. And I just think we, we would be remiss in, in not waiting for some of these discussions to come to fruition before, because we've all seen, you know, some of the greater powers to be turned the tide of these discussions. We've seen it multiple times with multiple of these organizations. So, I, I, this, now's not the time, to my opinion.
Who wants to go next?
Off that, can you just talk about timeline and what delaying this decision would do both to, just to planning, both the runway and here?
Well, I mean.
Could we delay this just?
I'm not sure that we'll, uh, I don't want to be too, until we talk to the school district. But I mean, I think the fact that we have been in negotiations with the school district and now there's probably less of a, of a need to be confidential in that. And I think, you know, that we'll have, Shannon will have a conversation with Tony to say, we're ready to be public about what we're proposing with that. And so, I'm meeting with Keely tomorrow to go over, you know, we have a draft IGA that we would want to submit to them. And, you know, then that's gonna start that process of, and certainly that's one of those key points that Dick's alluding to, that in his mind is critical. If, not that he would still even consider, but you know, for that to look at. Because that, certainly having that 10 acres back gives us a lot more flexibility and snow storage and some different things we're jumping on that site.
Summer, summer use, et cetera, et cetera.
And, uh, so, uh, you know, we're, that's probably, I would like to think that in, within a couple months, although with the holidays coming, you know, I'm not sure how quick they'll move, that at least if they seem receptive to this draft of the IGA, then maybe, you know, then as far as we know, everything's still moving in that right direction on that particular conversation. You know, I, is it? I don't know how many, how many of the councils, you know, it, it's, it's gonna take work and effort to go in and show, design what it could look like on runway. You know, and I think honestly, that's, uh, an exercise that if the majority of you aren't supportive of losing housing, I mean, you're still losing, you know, you're gonna lose some units of housing. There's just no way around it, right? We know that's gonna happen. If you got 3 acres of, of stuff and granted, some of that area is burdened by easements that you can't build on anyways, but you're still gonna lose, you're probably gonna lose at least 20 units, I would guess.
At least, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's the compatibility issue of, you know, you've got your neighborhood, then you've got a remote parking lot, and then you've got your school. And it just makes it really difficult to figure out how have the connectivity between the school and the neighborhood when you've got a skier parking lot in the middle. It, it's a incompatible land use as it seems.
But if that's what you guys want to see, we'll, we'll draw it up and look at it. But, you know, I know Dick does, but I don't know how, if the rest of you think it's in, you know, it's an exercise that you want to see.
The other side of the coin to, to Dick's thoughts there. Um, in my mind, our, our workforce is the most important. The people are the most important piece of what we're doing here. Housing is, is probably the most important need for them. Um, and, and so, you know, my intent is that, yeah, that we house our workforce locally. And, um, this parcel up by the school is 8 acres and, you know, there's an opportunity for 60 units, give or take, on that parcel alone. You know, I'm also passionate about boots and bikes, more boots and bikes in town. And, and I love the idea of like a little bit more efficient infrastructure serving our housing, right? From basically the Justice Center to CMC. I'd love to see, you know, more buses going up and down there to get more boots and bikes. And I think having that compatible use, critical mass of housing, all in that zone really kind of makes it, kind of makes it work. And, and so, for me, with housing piece and the more boots and bikes, moving this parking lot, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm super passionate about open space as well. But I think we can accomplish all of these things in kind of the three discussions tonight about, um, the runway, the parking lot, and then, you know, housing our locals with this neighborhood preservation discussion. I think this parking lot is, is, solves it all, quite frankly, because you get this 20 or 60 more units of housing, right? Like, we're not gonna put housing on McCain. There's an opportunity here to, I don't think, I don't, I don't think any of us want that, right? Like, um, at least not in this location. And, and I'm not suggesting we put housing on McCain at all, just to be clear. Um, so to me, moving this parking lot, it, it, it gives us more housing. It, adding 60 units is, is way more impacted we're gonna have with this neighborhood preservation policy that we're gonna discuss next. Like, maybe you get a couple of. Like, maybe you get a couple of houses moved with any changes there, but maybe not. So I, I think this is the best benefit for our community. Move the parking lot, happy to vote on and move with it now. And, um, yeah, and I still think you're protecting open space. There's fifty plus acres we've protected there. The zone to the, to the east is, you know, if you look at the, the, the land to the north there, it's kind of commercial industrial and we've protected the open space that I think needs to be protected. So, good moving forward.
Well, first off, I want to say thank you. I think that you guys did an amazing job from where we were on the south portion, the southeast portion. And, you know, the, to where we are, you know, decreasing the, um, the size of it by thirty percent is fantastic. Decreasing the visibility of it and preserving the scenic corridor that was labeled on there. You're not having the issue of the disturbance of historic material. And then the cost, like, I, we, we didn't even put a figure on what it was going to cost to remove that material. And down to, I think you had five thousand bucks on there, like, that's all really, really remarkable. And I want to say I thank you and all that made this a lot more palatable, for sure. I think that there is no harm in pushing this out. And I'm not saying keep the parking on block eleven for all eternity and let the, let, uh, our guests run over our school kids trying to get schooled. That's, that's not where I'm at. I'm just saying, let's not commit to this tonight. Let's just wait this out, think about how much changes in twenty-four or thirty-six months. And we're not, if we do the northern part, or part of runway, we're not forced to make this decision right now. And so I think making it prematurely can only hinder our progress. And so, you know, um, that would be my, my, my plea and my position. If we are to approve it, I would love to see a maximum days per year that it's utilized and work that into the contract with the ski resort. No overnight parking, uh, some sort of open space protection where this does not become a slippery slope. And I, I think the last thing you said was just really resonated with me that we need to test these soils on block eleven because of all the, the oil damage, uh, the oil leaking, the soil damage. I'm like, well, let's not do that to McCain. Let's not put all that damage from block eleven and just throw it on McCain. And so I really think that this is the time to, to pump the brakes and postpone it. But if, uh, if we're not, um, there's a couple of things that we can do to help minimize the effects. And once again, thank you so much for, for making this, uh, a better situation.
I'll agree with Jay on a lot of those points, not all of them. First off, I mean, what you provided with us is an excellent alternative to what we originally talked about a couple of months ago. We're leaving the buffer in place, we're leaving the dredge rock, we addressed a lot of the concerns. For me, this lot needs to get out of McCain. Let's, let staff plan the neighborhood. Sure, it can be phased, but in no version in my mind does.
Out of block eleven, you mean?
Yeah, otherwise, out of block eleven, the parking does not belong.
Dick got excited when you said out of McCain.
He did, uh-oh, sorry. It doesn't belong in block eleven. I understand the value in phasing that development to adjust some on needs, but in zero way to accommodate for parking. So the parking's out of block eleven in my mind. The fact that you came back with this excellent alternative, you made the point that it is such a low price point. So that's something where I'm ready to commit to this as an option. I don't think the environmental impacts, the taxpayer dollars we're putting into this. If things change, if we have an incredible agreement with CMC, with some other entity to find parking, if we move in a year or two, like, there's nothing wasted by moving forward with this plan. I'd love to be nimble, I'd love to find an alternative, but I think this is one of the best options. This is largely gonna be used in the winter. And I think we talk a lot about when, of course, we want to protect open space, the river restoration, and when there's that snow cover, as it likely will be many of the days that this will be using, that land is, right? I'm understanding that is protected by the snow. So, um, so I'm in favor of, favor of moving with this plan, being open to alternative discussions of something happens with CMC, the ski area, but moving forward with this.
Could I make one more comment? I don't know if you want to go first or you can go last.
No, no, I'll go last.
I figured you'd want to. Doesn't belong on McCain either. And by deciding tonight, we take away all motivation for negotiations to find a better place for it. It's, it's the wrong time to vote.
I also support moving it forward and, Dick, I understand, um, your concerns and they're valid and I'm not trying to take away from that. But I do think this is a good solution. It's right next to landscaping companies and all kinds of industrial use. So it's not unique. I mean, it is also next to open space, but it's not, um, actually that unique of a, um, use out there. And I just, as Lori really elegantly put, the mixing of, uh, um, all these different people coming in and out into, um, the parking lot on Airport Road just is not a good solution for work for, up against workforce housing. So, um, I am in favor of moving it. And I agreed really with everything that Carol said. Thank you for finding this, and Todd. Not much of it, Jason. But thank you for finding this solution and I think it's the best choice for the workforce, which is, um, the number one concern. And, um, I am very glad and I think we should continue to be looking for better and better options and, um, and also working with the ski area as much as we can to reduce the need for this at all over the maybe long midterm.
Well, I don't think your decision here is, you know, something where, um, we're running out and doing X, Y, Z tomorrow, right? It, I mean, it's basically prepared the way it's prepared. So there's lots of time. I mean, there's lots of things to work through. There's lots of other talks and data and things that we want to come back and look at. To me, to me, what it says right now to us is that we're gonna focus more on runway for housing and what we bring back to you versus the exercise of looking at, do we still possibly plan for parking on there? And I don't hear the majority of you wanting to look at that part. That doesn't mean still that, that we're not nimble, that something won't change, that we're gonna continue to look for, could we phase this out at some point, not have it before it ever even happens? I'm not hopeful that'll happen, but there's still, I think there are still things to work towards. And we're a ways down the road from that, so. And we might, you know, who knows, if we slow this down, we probably bought another year that we may just continue to park on block eleven and not move it out there, right? Because the ski area's preference right now is to continue to use that as long as they can. So, you know, depending on when we decide to start or when that starts is gonna dictate what that looks like. And we'll, there's a lot more conversations. And I know Lori was just saying, I think this is one of those ones where we want to be in front of you more often than not as we work through this, so, alright?
Alright, well, thanks for all your work.
I don't think we have time for neighborhood preservation tonight.
Chris, it was an excellent memo.
We'll see it again in the packet for the end of November. I don't, I know food is here because we don't, they had to pick up food. So I don't know if you all want to grab your food and then come back in and do your exec session so that staff can eat or?
Sure, that's fine with me. Is that okay? Do you want to call us into executive session then?
Sure, if I can get a motion under, uh, Colorado revised statutes twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, A, B, and E, to discuss real property located in the Upper Blue Basin of Summit County, um, in the general Borias Pass area, as well as real property located within the town of Breckenridge, known as parcel six, um, of the Peak Eight subdivision, to discuss negotiations regarding such real property, um, and the applicable development fees and receive legal advice related thereto.
Okay, so I say all in favor?
You say so moved.
So moved.
And then, yeah, we just need a second and then a roll call.
Oh, we do need a roll call.
Yeah, you do need to vote.
Okay. Um, alright, Jay Beckerman?
Yes.
Carol Sade?
Yes.
Yes.
Dick Carlton?
Yes.
Kelly Owens?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in executive session and, uh, back to the regular meeting.
We'll come back to the regular meeting, um, after executive session, just to close it out and report if there are any decisions.
Yep, that we need to make.
That we need to make.
Okay.
I don't like any of them.
Ready?
Alright.
Alright, I'm gonna call the town council meeting, regular meeting for November twelfth to order. Roll call please, Helen.
Marika Page. Dick Carlton. Steve Gerard. Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. Alright, approval of the minutes. Town council minutes, October twenty-second. Feels like an age ago. You guys okay with everything? Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda, Shannon?
No changes.
Changes. Alright, now is our opportunity for communications to council, public comment. This is a time for non-agenda items only and has a three-minute time limit, please. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Onto continued business. Second reading of council bill, series twenty-two, four, council bill number twenty-six, an ordinance setting the mill levy within town of Breckenridge for twenty-twenty-five.
Council Pam Ness, revenue manager for the record. This is the second reading for the twenty-two property tax mill levy. This ordinance is setting the mill levy at five point zero seven mills. This is the amount that is authorized to be imposed and cannot be increased without an election. This is the same rate that we have utilized since two thousand and fourteen. For the twenty-two budget year, we forecast that the five point zero seven mills will result in property taxes of five point one million. We recommend that the town council approve the five point zero seven mills upon second reading.
Pam? Any questions? Any comments from the public on council bill number twenty-six, series twenty-two? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass council bill number twenty-six, series twenty-two, the title of which has been read to the record.
Um, any further discussion?
I just want to recognize Carol's letter. You know, I, I can appreciate her concern with property tax. Uh, unfortunately, I don't think it has anything to do with our mill levy. I think it has to do everything to do with Gallagher Amendment and that her commercial property is taxed at such a high rate. So I appreciate her reaching out if she's listening. We, we all read it, we listened, um, unfortunately, but we're not the issue.
Yep, couldn't agree more. Thank you very much for saying that, Dick. Anything else? Roll call please, Helen.
Council member Beckerman. Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Alright, we have no new business tonight, but we can move right into planning matters, planning commission decisions. Alright, good. Always like to move past that one.
Were you worried about that?
Never know. Um, report of the town manager and staff.
So just two things for you. I think Peyton shared, um, a reminder that the philanthropy awards are next Thursday evening, the twenty-first. They have very few tickets left, so if you are interested in going and you have not yet responded to get a seat, please let her know. So we wouldn't just, as a reminder, Dave Byrd will be getting the outstanding board member award.
Warm up, Peyton, get some warm up.
Very important work.
Cannot say enough how much good work Dave has done and continues to do. Um, and then the other thing, if you are interested of a tour, uh, of tour, if you are interested to tour the e-delivery, uh, center, they're gonna do, you know, the walk, it's not very big, so, um, they'll walk you guys through it on November twentieth. Anytime between seven or seven-thirty, just stop by and take a look.
The Wood Center?
The e-delivery.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
Yep. So, um, anyway, so put that on your calendar if you're interested. And other than that, I don't have anything.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. Alright, Carol and I were, I, I had a technical question, sorry. Um, report of the mayor and council members, um, cast MMC. So we did have a mayor's managers', um, meeting and, um, there was a lot of kind of, um, discussion about the school district and the mill and what, you know, what they still want to do. They're very committed to, um, moving forward as much as they can with the, um, I don't know why I can't, career pathways, thank you. Um, and I think that's one of the reasons that it's on my mind to just support those programs as much as we can because I think there are a lot of things that we can do as an organization, maybe we can do as business owners or working people and just connections to be made, so I think we should, I'm going to certain, certainly lean into that in any way I can. Love to see where that goes.
I texted Doug like during break.
Good.
Asking him about a drone show.
Good, that's great. The other thing that we talked about was we, um, as a group at MMC, which means all the towns and county, are very interested in moving forward with, um, supporting our immigrant community and, um, our employees, um, who are so important and have been here a long time and are a part of, important part of our community. So, um, we have in the recent past kind of come up with, um, I guess some meaningful resolutions and ways to support, um, whether it's, you know, introductions. Um, and I think just supporting, I guess, um, the Mountain Dreamers kind of initiatives and really wanting to, um, make sure that it's very clear that our community supports all these folks and that includes the government leaders. And so, um, I guess we wanted to take a temperature on, um, this council's, um, interest in passing a resolution of some sort in the future that absolutely would, you know, the Equity Commission could help, um, kind of craft that and floor and maybe rent it by Mountain Dreamers and what could. and maybe run it by Mountain Dreamers and what could be meaningful, because we don't want it to be empty words, obviously. But want to make sure that everybody up here is supportive of us moving forward with that.
Yeah, I think it's, um, important that we're considering this, because there is a chance that things will change significantly, there'll be a lot of stress and fear in the community. I think one thing we've learned with the Equity Commission is make sure that we are involving people at the table to make sure any efforts we're doing are appreciated in the right direction. Um, I think at, um, mayors and managers coordinating something, it being unified from the community would be really important, but bringing in a voice from that immigrant community that's well in tune with what's going on, be it Floor, be it Mountain Dreamers, some of our partners, so let's bring them in before we decide on our direction.
Agreed. Totally.
I fully agree, fully supportive and want to do anything we can. I just, I want to be very thoughtful in the world we're in today, do not misstep. And, uh, and I think Carol's idea is to bring, you know, people with first invoice is important. Maybe kick, kick something by CFL as well.
Yeah. Okay.
I agree.
Great.
Yeah, resolutions and proclamations are great, but, uh, however, we can support Mountain Dreamers and their efforts to being proactive to, not just today, but especially tomorrow, uh, would be fantastic.
Agreed, totally. And that's absolutely the consensus that mayors and managers is that there's no reason to just read something. We want it to be meaningful and, um, and follow up and what else to say about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you said it, um, it's, it's important not just to do a resolution, but also to take meaningful action to support the people in our community and that are part of our organization, that are part of our family here. Um, and I think that will, I know it will mean a lot to our staff. And I'm sure Mar- Mountain Dreamers would appreciate any support that we can give them.
Um, those were my takeaways. Did you have anything else from mayors? It's kind of a.
No.
Yeah.
I mean, we talked about nicotine funding and childcare, and so there's still an ongoing conversation about, you know, how to do more with less.
Right. So we task that to the people who are brilliant, the managers, and then they'll bring it back. Bring us along. Alright, um, open space.
Um, the minutes from our last meeting are in the packet. Our next meeting is a joint meeting. Um, that is next, uh, well, Monday, I guess this coming Monday, uh, the eighteenth. And, uh, appreciate anyone that can make it there, uh, to be part of that discussion. I know they're excited to, to have that discussion and talk about, uh, some issues that are affecting open space.
Great.
I think I reported on meeting last, our last meeting.
Rec tourism?
Uh, we had a meeting, um, I think it was last week, two weeks ago, maybe. And highlights, um, Matt Bowder reported on, he did a trip with the CTO, with Colorado Tourism, um, office to England, um, to London, and, uh, super cool. And it really spurred a discussion around how strong that market was in years past, and it, it's not what it was, that, that, um, you know, Great Britain market. And I think a lot of that is outgoing foreign travel is, is back and hundred percent. Incoming foreign travel is not. So we had some good discussion around that. Some good discussion around the accurate numbers, forecasting numbers, that I think we've all, I got that right at the wrong time. We've, we are, I think I've seen the reports from Lucy and such, but we had a little more in-depth discussion, so it's good. Those were, those were probably the highlights.
Okay. Rec history?
We meet tomorrow.
Oh, they're gone. Um, CML?
Um, our next meetings early December.
And social equity?
Um, meetings were in, minutes were in our packet, and I reported on the meeting last council meeting, but, um, I did want to highlight that since then, um, the Social Equity Commission town partnered with CMC, Mountain Dreamers, to bring the Mexican consulate to the community. Did I miss any of our main partners on that, CMC, Mountain Dreamers?
Yep.
Okay, but that was.
I guess the only, I mean, we, sorry, had great, um, partnership with Bistro and with Hearthstone and with Beaver Run as well.
Yeah, so a lot of incredible community members came together to host the Mexican consulate. They issued some, they helped serve some five hundred community members. Over eighty percent were local, and this is a huge deal in helping some community members get up-to-date papers, um, that allow them to get a driver's license, open a bank account, get an I-ten, be up-to-date with taxes, so, um, that paper helps open so many more doors. So, um, I know Shannon was there and volunteered, there were a bunch of volunteers from town staff, from community members, um, and it was a really successful event that helped nudge the needle in the right direction and truly help community members. So Floor did an incredible job organizing that.
That's awesome. So is that something that just happens once, or will it happen again?
This was the first time, and it was so successful, so we're definitely working to, um, to bring them back. They hadn't been to Breckenridge in many, many years, so it was great to have that here.
Huge, uh, shout out for Floor, I think she was hugely influential in that.
So the consulate came to town to work and help people, like, kind of came to us rather than having folks have to go to.
Yeah, another issue worth highlighting, to get those appointments at the consulate in Denver. I mean, there's a huge backlog, so when the mobile consulate's able to come into a community, I mean, they are just so quick with, they got the papers right there, Shannon, I don't know.
Passports, like, it was, it was amazing to see, one, how unbelievably well organized they are, right? They, people come in, they talk to somebody about what they need, they tell them what they need to do, they fill out paperwork, somebody checks it, and then they assign them a station, one through ten. And, you know, we were just helping, bringing people to the right station, but they sit down and they process them, and if it's a passport they need, they can create it on-site, right? They can, it just, it was, first certificates, like paperwork that people would probably never be able to get, right? Because they can't necessarily go back to get it, and so it was, it was a really amazing thing to see and then watch them hand all the paperwork out to people and how happy they were, and kids getting dual citizenship. It was just, it was, it was a really heartwarming thing to see. Um, and the, hmm, I can't remember what his title is, the consulate general, maybe, but, um, he did like a presentation and talked to folks about fraud and sending money, and like, it was, there was also an educational component to it that was, was really interesting as well. So they seemed really happy with what, you know, the site and, you know, the connections and everything that they were provided, so hopefully they'll come back.
Wonder if there's other consulates that would get to come do that, and that's cool.
Mm-hmm, it was really cool.
Work. Cool, um, arts and cultural master plan?
Uh, we're gonna meet on Friday, and I'll have a report, um, by May. Scott reminded me that, uh, we did have a meeting up at, uh, an open house up at the Lurium, um, Trailhead. Jeez, I don't even, was that two weeks ago? We're gonna have.
Last Monday.
And, uh, it was great. It was, you know, Duke did an amazing job, um, kind of bringing, you know, bringing everyone together. We had a bunch of homeowners there that were willing to speak up and ask questions and part of it. And Duke just did a great job of saying that this isn't the perfect solution, but it's a lot better than where we were. And it's, um, it's saying, help keep, you know, Riden Bridge and the sheriffs out, out of that area a little bit and keep it, keep it safer and for our guests. So I think it was a really great job, and, um, you know, the feedback that Duke has gotten has been from people that own property up there but don't live there and haven't seen the signs. And so that, and, uh, can't say enough for his responses to those emails of going, well, how did I not hear about this? It was like, well, we had signs all the way up, and so that he's, since we're not doing any work on it until next spring, they're going to keep signage up there to, uh, be able to, uh, supply input and, you know, and opinions all through the winter. So when people are out there, they can kind of scan a QR code and, and comment on, on the, on the project. Looking forward to it.
I would think they're going to get a lot of supportive comments.
I would think so. They have plenty of time while people are waiting to have the person that slid into them. I hope they will spoil a lot.
Alright, um, any other matters?
I've got one. Um, I had somebody come to me and talk a little about, how can we put some teeth into ensuring that people understand that their, their, um, outbuildings, historic outbuildings or historic sheds are, uh, that they need a permit and they can't just tear them down, you know? And maybe the, the, the idea that came across, but I'm sure there are others, maybe we can put it in the deed or something of historic properties where there's one of these buildings that requires the new buyer to sign an affidavit or something to that effect, recognizing the ordinance around, um, historic sheds or, or just anything to help protect those, you know, before something happens to them and, you know, where the owner goes, oh, I didn't know. So I don't know the answers, but, you know, it's a, I thought it was an interesting concept we're bringing to the group and see if we can come up with something.
I agree with that. I mean, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't necessarily know.
What's happened, then I guess it'll happen again.
Right. Something? Do people support thinking about something to?
Yeah.
Or communication?
Thanks, Mark.
Julia? Yeah. Yeah, and demo by neglect and that kind of thing.
Or even if we sent one out registered mail that, that, uh, requires the signature of receipt or something like that, just anything that's got a little more to it to, to inform them. So, just thoughts, I thought it was a good comment.
I do too. Any other matters?
Um, I forgot to mention Julia, working with the Eclipse, do a dark sky, it's not just a film, so a couple of films with a couple of speakers on Monday, the twenty-fifth, at five o'clock. Um, so there'll be a flyer coming out soon. And we're, um, and if it's clear night, uh, one of the speakers will bring a telescope to look at the night sky. So, um, it's really exciting and interesting, and if you guys are interested, just wanted to make sure you.
Great idea. Love it. Okay. Kind of thanks. Welcome, Keely, we're super happy to have you. Part of our team.
Happy to be here.
Alright, meeting adjourned.